Thank you. Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Nanhoban?
Here.
Um, Mr. Lance?
Not present.
Mr. Cruz?
Present.
Um, Ms. Seymour?
Here.
Ms. George?
Here.
By members of the...
I mean, you called six here. How many?
Okay. If there's not much time.
Five.
Five, five.
Five here.
Five.
The first thing on our agenda, this is a meeting conducted to business to your policy and we're not going to have any distractions or qualifications. We're currently active in the management team. Uh, the first item on our agenda is the authorization of investment advisory and monitoring in close contact with the volunteer group for the company's retirement program.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, man, president, councilman, mayor. Um, I'm here to introduce the topic and then I'll turn it over to Chris Coon from the Boggan Group. Um, the Southfield employee retirement system has about $115 million, which is a pension system for the general employees at the city of Southfield. The, um, one of the consult, one of the service advisors is the investment consultant. They monitor the investments, they advise on what would be the appropriate investments for the fund. Uh, they keep track of all the money managers, they monitor their performance, and they give advice about the structure of the fund and, uh, they're, they're the very important points person for the SIRs Board and the City Council in managing these assets. Um, the investment consultant that we did have, uh, there was discussion with City Council earlier this year, those, uh, that consultant was terminated and we embarked as council, instructed us on a search for a new, um, investment consultant, which we did right away, which is just from the, uh, purchasing department. The, um, we received nine bids for the services, eight of them were responsive. We had a subcommittee that reviewed those bids and selected four firms to interview. We had a joint meeting of the SIRs Board and the Council Finance Committee, uh, July 21st, and we interviewed four of the firms. And it was, um, the recommendation of all of those involved in the interviews to select the Boggan Group. Uh, Chris Coon is, um, their, uh, lead consultant, senior consultant of Boggan Group, and he here to provide information to council about their firm and about their, um, capabilities and, um, giving you the information that you need.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name's Chris Coon, as Lori introduced, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about the Boggan Group, a little bit about myself, and then a little bit about what our hope is to do for the SIRs or the Southfield employee retirement system. If you have questions at any time, feel free to jump in. Uh, I want to make this as informal and informative as possible, so. There we go. Um, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but as I said, if I'm not touching on something that you find important, please, as I said, ask a little bit more. This first slide is what we refer to as our triangle slide. Pretty easy to tell why. Uh, and I'm probably going to spend the most time on this, this slide. I'll tell you, if you read our mission statement, it's to represent the sole interest of our clients by redefining independence. And independent is very, very important to the Boggan Group. So, we were started back in 2000, and independence was probably the cornerstone of the firm. And you can see it's one of the, the three legs of this stool or this triangle. And I'm going to start down there. Uh, when we say independent, we literally hold ourselves to what we think is the highest standard of independence. And the first part of that is, we actually sign on as fiduciary, just like everyone, uh, the trustees of the, the City Council is the trustee for the SIRs plan. You're a fiduciary to the plan. We sign on as fiduciary, just like you. So, we hold ourselves to that same level of responsibility as the trustees of the plan are, and we do that for every account. There's no exception. Our firm was structured in a way to, um, eliminate the sources of, um, outside influence that could impair our ability to provide consulting advice. So, when I say that, what I mean is, we don't have any other sources of, uh, revenue coming in, out, other than from public pension funds like yourself, tax hardly, uh, plans, or endowment foundation. We strictly are providing investment consulting advice and receiving hard dollar fees back. There's no relationships with any banks or brokerages or insurance companies, and we're able to then, as I said, eliminate that distraction or that influence that may, uh, come if you have two or more sources of revenue. We have one source of revenue, and as I said, that way, we, you know, we, we think we have the, the purest form of consulting, um, out there. Which then kind of leads me to the next stool or our resources. We have a very simple business model, so we're just providing these, uh, investment consulting services, defined benefit plans, or defined contribution plans, or other kind of investment tools. And so, when we go to put our resources, uh, to work, there's only really a couple things we can do with them. One is to retain good people. And I will tell you, that's the most important resource that our firm is, the people that we have. Unlike where you're actually building something, we're a service industry, and so that we will say that our most valuable resource walks out the door every afternoon, and then we hope comes back every morning. And so, that is the case, that they want to make sure we hire the very best people to provide the services that we're looking to, um, to provide to the SIRs Board. The other things that they can use for those resources really are the system, the software, and the databases. So, we're really an information service. We need to be able to have the very best system, be able to put together what we think are the very best, uh, investment programs for our client. And so, they want to make sure we have every tool that's necessary to do that. And then what's the, if you look on, um, the slide here, you can see we're 58 employees now, and growing. And really, I mentioned the simple business model of providing, uh, advice. Really, it's the only two, two things we're looking at is growing our business and improving the services that we're providing. So, that's kind of our focus resources. And then that leaves us, the, the top, uh, leg of the stool here are the service orientation. So, we're only providing these services. Our focus is on providing the very best services. And one of the things that I think differentiates us a little bit is our focus on customization. So, we recognize that every board is, consists of different, uh, trustees that all have different influences. Each plan is different, there's different funding levels, different, uh, target return levels. And so, we want to be able to provide that customized service to each one of our plans. And so, our, the whole team is focused on making sure we work to get the right investment structure for each one of our accounts, and recognizing that no two accounts are going to look identical. Any real questions on that? Well, now we can pick up a little speed. Um, we talked a little bit about the experience. I mentioned 58 employees. A number of us have either credentials, MBAs, or CFAs, or some sort of designation. That's a very important, uh, focus of the firm. We really want to make sure that our people are continuing to grow in the business, continuing to get better at what we do, and it's not one of those things where you start and you just, you know, are punching a clock. You're always trying to improve yourself because in the investment world, things are changing every day. And so, you need to be able to change and adapt with them. Um, we're, what, 37th out of last year. As I mentioned, we're growing. I'm guessing we're going to be a little bit higher than that this year when they put together the final results for consulting firms, and we're the 10th largest independent out there. Any other, any questions there? Moving on to kind of the servicing of your relationship, so I will leave the service efforts for the Boggan Group. I'm located here in Michigan. I've been doing institutional investment consulting since 2000, and then recently joined the Boggan Group, uh, late last year. So, I do have some familiarity with your board. I've worked with you in a prior firm for like the past seven years. And so, the one difference you'll notice is I have a little bit more team behind me at this point. Uh, you know, it's Misha and Donna on the slide. We work as a team, as well as with all of the other consultants and performance people. The way we're structured, we have a lead consultant, that's my role. I'd be the one coming out servicing the relationship. The little different, uh, format at the Boggan Group is that we have this internal consultant, or Misha's role. She's going to help out a lot on the administration side. So, when we need to transfer funds between two managers, or invite a manager to a meeting or something like that, she's going to help out with the administration, help Lori out, uh, with any letters or any, just kind of, uh, kind of the administrative part of the fund, which then allows me to focus a little bit more on the big picture. Um, you know, what strategy makes the most sense, where should I be spending my time on researching, and how can I make your performance a little bit better? So, uh, and then Donna's kind of focused on the performance side. The other thing the team does is that puts more than one set of eyes looking at the materials that come in front of the SIRs Board and City Council. So that when we put together presentations or performance reports or whatever it might be, Donna's going to look at it, then gets passed on to Misha, then passed on to me. We actually have kind of a peer review process to make sure that our quality control is maintained. Any questions there? We've put a snapshot up here of some local and not so local plants that we're working with. We're currently working with about 250 public funds, predominantly, I would say, on the eastern half of the United States. And we have about 500 total institutional relationships, and it's about $60 billion in assets under advisement. Uh, we, I mentioned kind of on that triangle slide, really focused on just four, four services that we provide for each of our clients. It includes the investment policy design, the asset allocation modeling, the manager selection and manager structure, and then the performance monitoring and manager monitoring. We'll do the other stuff, you know, anything investment related that comes up, we're happy to, to get involved in. We're often working with the actuaries on projects as well. But that's really kind of the, the four basic food groups of what we do every day. I mentioned a little bit ago about working with this board, and what we've done is put together a slide of the relationship. Um, your, your plan is a little different than a lot of other plans out there, in that you have a SIRs Board and you have City Council that are both helping out managing the portfolio. And I'm, you know, keenly aware of how that works, that we work with the SIRs Board, we make recommendations to come to the City Council Finance Committee, and then oftentimes you may end up here in front of full council, describing whatever changes we might be going, uh, to be making at the fund level. So, as I said, we're happy to provide those services and kind of maintain that same structure that you're familiar with. Um, the other part is I have an intimate knowledge of the portfolio. So, over the last seven years, you know, I've been one of the people that have worked on putting together the different managers in the portfolio, um, kind of tweaking the asset allocation, and negotiated the very difficult 2008, 2009 time period. And, um, you know, I have this, this knowledge of how things have worked, and what has worked and what hasn't worked, and, you know, I think that's very helpful, kind of having that, that history with the fund. I know you probably can't really see this one very good. Um, the only thing you really need to know is the blue dots above the gray dots is good, right? So, the blue dots actually represent what your fund's performance has been. The gray dot is what we call your policy index. That's what we would have expected you to get if you just received index type returns. And then the bars actually represent the other public funds. So, if you're in the top half of that, uh, in that top light blue section, those are like the top 25% performance, uh, fund. If you're in the dark blue at, at the bottom, that means you're in the bottom 25%. And so, if you look at like the, the two-year mark, your fund is actually in the top 25%, which I would say is a commendable spot. Anytime you're in the top 25, I, I think, you know, you're doing a very good job. When you go out further than that, the three, the four, and the five, you're actually in the top 5%. So, your fund has done better than 95% of the funds out there over the last five years. So, I mean, that's, I, you know, a compliment to the SIRs Board and to City Council for all the hard work that we've gathered, put together, or we've done for the, the fund. Um, and then the right-hand side actually is the calendar year of performance. You can see 2014, not our best year, but the, the year before that we did actually exceedingly well. Any questions there? So, then, the past performance has been very good. I want to let you know, we don't stop just because we had a couple of good years. We're always looking to try to make things better. And so, that's one of the things, the commitment I make to you, is that I'm going to continue to work so that those numbers stay where they're at. And, and we don't always get everything right. The investment world is very difficult, but as I said, I will do everything possible to find, you know, that extra one, half of 1% or whatever it might be, so that we can continue to fund retirement for the employees of the, the South, the city of Southfield. And then the last thing we have is fees. The first two years, we're proposing a $50,000 fee. I think that's a little bit below where we, you were with the prior consulting firm, and then increasing up to 55, uh, in year three. We also make a service guarantee. All that is, is that in the first 12 months, if you're not completely satisfied with your services, you're able to walk away, and we'll refund any paid fees by the, uh, the retirement system.
Can we hire retiree every year?
No. Good question. And I will tell you, no one has ever taken us up on that. So, and we've made this since our inception, and so we really think, you know, we'll work so hard that there won't be any questions about, um, money. And it includes everything. That's the other, the 50,000 includes all services. And then the last thing we put up here is a transition plan. Um, the good news is, it's done. So, as the, the consultant that took over in the intern basis, we've actually completed the transition plan. We are prepared, you know, if you had to, uh, just, if you had selected someone other than our group, you know, to pass on that data to whoever you hadn't selected. But at this point, basically, all the data has been downloaded, and, uh, we're up and running with your, your current service provider. So, and then that would conclude my prepared comments.
Any questions?
I'd just like to go on record and say that it's a lack of questions, and so, good that we're not interested. A lot of us around that board that interviewed with the SIRs and, uh, and Chris has answered a lot of the questions at that time.
Any other questions? All right, we will move forward to the next one.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Dred, I work for DTE Energy, and I work in corporate and government field. I'd like to introduce some people from our vegetation management program, and the importance of doing line clearance work. They asked if we would come today and make a presentation to you about the importance of the line clearance work.
We do have some handouts we'd like to share with you, if we could.
That's a perfect number. Looks like we have nine people here, and just by luck, that's how many printed out.
So, as Kathy mentioned, I'm Brian Ondy, Director of Vegetation Management for DTE Energy, and Joe Robinson is the manager. So, Joe and I collect clear to leads for DTE Energy on the line clearance tree trimming program. So, we'd like to discuss with you here today, our phased approach on how we go about doing this work, um, and answer any questions that you may have, um, and then we'll move from there. What do you want to?
Sure. So, if you go to the first slide, and I'm sure many of you won't be seeing this, but I, I'll step you through our process. And we spent the last several months really focusing on customer communication and community level communication. So, if you look at how our, we're calling it tree trimming, because that's ultimately what our customers are told of. Vegetation management's an industry term, but tree trimming is what we do. So, that pretty much relates to what our customers understand, what we've done in the past, and, um, how we're moving forward together. So, if you go to the first slide, which is actually number two on, on the deck, um, we've broken down our communication process into four phases. And the first phase is where we identify all the work for any given year. And typically, for DTE, our maintenance program around tree trimming is about a five-year cycle. So, every five years, we come through the same community, and, uh, we repeat that pattern year after year. Um, so, the very first step on those bullet items under Phase One was the initiation phase. So, we put that in our plan for 2015 and beyond. Uh, the circuits would be identified, and we would know which communities they would go through. So, one of the first steps is we work with team members like Kathy and our regional relations team, and we reach out to the government entities, city councils, mayors, city, city officials, to let them know what our plans are well before the work would ever happen. So, this is really Phase One for Southfield. We haven't started tree trimming as part of our maintenance program yet during the season, as far as, as far as this new approach that we're talking about today. So, that's really the first step that you'll see, that as we reach out to the community level leaders, they come in with, uh, with packages, with maps, and with circuits in which areas we'd be working on. And, uh, in fact, Kathy had came out and, and talked with, uh, with Fred Zorn, um, had met with him. He had some questions and actually asked me to come in and, and clarify some of the questions they had. And, uh, we had another meeting at that point. We went over this four-phase process. We provided a city map in which areas we'd be working on, which I'll review here in a minute. Um, and at that point in time, they had asked us to come back and, and meet with, with all of you. So, that's what got us here. So, right now, if you're asking where we are in our DTE tree trimming process for, for Southfield, we're in Phase One. Once we get the regional relations, or we get the community level improvement or approval, and to go ahead and get the green light, so to speak, in our process, at that point in time, we would send letters and phone calls out, out to the city residents, just for the circuits that are going to be, uh, worked on for this year. So, it would not be a citywide communication, it would be specific to the circuits that we were working on. At that point in time, and that, if you notice, there's a timeline right underneath each one of those phases, we're talking about eight to 12 weeks well before tree trimming crews would ever show up on the property. So, what we're talking about is well in advance notice before any work would be done on any property. And at that point, the city officials or community level leaders would understand what's happening, because we realize when tree trimming happens, sometimes the residents call into their city officials, and their government officials can start asking questions. We want to make sure that you have all the information that we do, and that you can answer their questions as they come in. So, at the end of Phase One, after the phone calls and letters would go out, we go into Phase Two. And what we've done in the past, uh, basically eight months, we've wrapped, ramped up an organization around planning, where we send, uh, DTE representatives out, and we knock on every single door that we're going to work on, um, and basically work with each one of those customers and residents, um, one by one. At that point in time, what we would do is we'd go through every single tree that would be, uh, marked for a trim or a removal, well before the work would be done. All those trees would be marked, so for example, if a planner came out to one of your residents, they would go in, and if there was a tree that was going to be trimmed, we'd mark it with a dot. If a trim was going to be, or if a tree was proposed, and I'm using the word as proposed, to be removed, we'd put a red ribbon on it at that point. Um, after the, all that work is done, and they categorize all this, they, or they program all that into a computer device, so we have everything by tree species, location with GPS, so there's no misunderstanding of which trees we're talking about. Once that's planned, that has a unique job plan for every single resident that we would have work with. At the end of that job being planned out, the planner would go up to the, the customer's door, knock on the door, and review the plan with them, trims and removes. And if they wanted to, they'd walk them through their backyard or front yard, depending on where the trees were, and show them the scope every step of the way. If there are any tree removals, there is an acknowledgement that we are proposing a removal, and at that point, the customer, or actually, we make sure it's the property owner would be signing off on it. So, we look at, uh, real estate records, ensure that we're actually working with the property owner of the residents. Um, so at that stage, the, the resident and the customer would be fully aware of the scope of work that, uh, that would be going on in the property. In the case where they're not home, all of that would be true. We'd leave a door hanger with the planner's contact information and cell phone number for them to be able to call back, and for us to go back and have that face-to-face communication. So, our goal is we're going to do everything in our power to have a face-to-face communication with the customer and the resident, to make sure they understand all the work that we're proposing to do. Um, at that stage, we're going door by door, customer by customer, and we work our way through the circuit. At the end of that notice, that is from, from seven weeks out all the way to two weeks before any tree crews would ever show up. So, at this stage, there's not any, uh, any tree work happening usually in the community at that time, or at least in that neighborhood. At that point in time, once the circuit is completely planned, that job plan is in writing, is printed out for our tree companies, and it's also electronic format as well, so they can use electronic devices. And at that point in time, uh, we move into Phase Three. At this point, I'll take a breath and see if you guys have any questions up to this point.
You addressed trees. However, we did a walk a couple of weeks ago over on the Carlton and Nancy Station, and there were vines, there was an empty lot, and there was vines coming out of this lot, trees, and coming over the, the lines. And I wondered, they look like they've been there a long time, and that has been seen several places throughout the city. Why aren't those being removed as your company evaluates the trees?
Sure. I'll answer that. That's a great question. It should be, and, and part of what we're going to ensure happens is, in the planning process, that vine or any vegetation that would approach our equip, or approach our equipment, we would include that in the scope of the trimming work. So, part of this planning process would identify those vines for removal.
So, if those were observed by the city at the time when you meet with the, the first phase, city leaders, um, those particular places that we've noticed that, they should be told to DTE?
Yes, and at, at that point, what we would ask, depending on where it was located in the city, um, if it was part of one of the circuits we were going to work in that year, we would say, okay, we will include that in our plan, ensure that we take care of it this year. If it was a circuit that's maybe next year or 2017, we would send one of our, our risk out and look at it and see what we think the risk is, and obviously, if the city's asking for us, we do everything in our power to, to determine if we can pull that work forward or not. Meaning, address it this year.
Yeah, just, uh, one thing, with the removal of the trees, whether they're the branches or the territory, whatever the case may be, DTE is also disposing of this, these materials as well, it's not going to cost the city or, or residents any, any fees or anything?
No, it will not. So, our, our spec, our specification now is all debris will be cleaned up and removed, and, uh, that's our standard. If the customer wanted it to cut in fireplace-sized logs, we'd leave it behind and stack for them. So, it's a question, but our, our default is we're going to remove it. But if the customer asks, we will, we will let it, we'll keep it on property, but cut it up in, in manageable pieces.
What would determine whether the tree was trimmed or, uh, removed?
Another great question. It, it has to do with the distance from the lines, the species of the trees, how quick it grows, and, um, what the health of the tree would be after we did a trimming. So, if a certain amount of the tree would be trimmed, required to trim it over, depending on the species, but let me just make up a, a percentage, if we would have to trim over 50% of the tree to get the clearance that we need for safe, reliable power, at that point, that tree most likely may be able to live through this year, but it's not going to survive for too long. So, that's why we have, uh, professional arborists that understand what trees do, and how to trim them, and at what point should we do a trim versus a removal. And that's part of the conversation with each of the customers and residents, to ensure what we leave behind is going to be a healthy, viable tree that's going to continue to grow.
Okay, a couple more questions. What is, when you take a tree down, do you grind stump so that you don't, that there's no stump there for the?
In most cases, what we do is we cut the stump, or we cut the stump or the remains as flush with the ground as we possibly can. That's mostly what, that's mostly how we treat a stump. In some cases, there could be some grinding, but grinding is not applicable to every single stump. There may be a tree that's near a fence or garage or in a location that stump grinding just came here. So the answer is it's in some cases.
If it's, in other words, if it's feasible, you would, but if it's not, you don't? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, in most cases, we cut them as flush to the ground as we can. That's our typical standard. And on exceptions, we'll grind stumps.
You know, cutting it as close to the ground as you can, I know, is leave a little attractive.
Sure. And I think that's where you're, that's part of the answer, right? So if we've got a pretty big tree, and it's a vocal part of your yard, and it's a massive stump, and it's right there in the center, that's when we would talk about a grinding at that point, right? If it's back lot against a fence or a garage, then nobody can see the amount of effort in time to grind that safely, just isn't worth it for the customer or for anybody, really, at that point. So that's why, it depends.
The second thing is, are you doing this with your own employees, or you have contractors that are doing the trimming?
We have our employees overseeing it, but all of the tree trimming is done by contractors that are certified by us and certified arborists, certified tree specialists, I should say.
So you have someone on site out there?
Correct. We have oversight of our DTE crews, correct. Yes.
Oversight is different than on-site?
In most cases, we'll have somebody that each day is there to oversee what they're doing, but not every single minute of the day, if I guess, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Mr. Cruz opened the door for me, but it's, only because I received a complaint last week about some tree trimming that was done, and there were some of the tree trimmings left in someone's backyard. They called DTE, nothing happened. They had to pay a company to come out and remove the debris. So what would happen in that type of situation?
Yeah, most likely, in that case, and I don't know the specific resident and what their address was, but I would expect, because the debris was not removed, it was during a storm. So during a storm, we don't remove trees that fall down on the wires. We just remove the part that knocked the wire down, and the rest of the tree is up to the resident or the customer to remove at that point.
But what was taken down by DTE, what have been removed?
What was removed from our wire, so if you can imagine, if a 40-foot oak tree from somebody's backyard fell and hit one of our wires, we would take just the portion that was on the wires to remove that piece, to get the wires back up. We'd take that debris and remove it. The rest of the tree would be up to the resident to cut up and dispose on their own.
Okay. I may contact someone afterwards about this.
Sure.
Take a full lane.
Yeah.
But when you're doing the tree trimming, if you notice that some of the poles are rotted or leaning over, or the wires are hanging too low, they need to be tightened, is that something that's done as well, or is that a whole different process?
In many cases, when there's equipment issues, the planner that's out can, will take a note of equipment issues. But there are service center planning engineers that do have circuits assigned to them, and they do pre-flights of it and make sure that poles are in the right order and everything else. So there is a different group that takes care of it, but our team does take notes and put it in the computer in hand, help to let them know that there's defects or potential defects on our equipment.
I thought I'd take you back, but one question is a minute. So if you're trimming a tree, and you remove the part of the tree that touches the line, is it communicated, not how is it communicated to the resident, is there a response or to the resident?
So what we're talking about, just to clarify, we're talking about this is only during storms. So typically, that's on our website, and then in many cases, the door crew, or the tree crews have door hangers and information they can give to the customers, and information to show them that that's our, pretty much, our policy during storm.
And for that, it's what's simply done during storm.
Yes.
On a 12-mile road between Lashan Road and Southfield Road, mostly on the north side of the street by Cramm Oak Road or whatever, the DTE trucks go on a bike path. And if it's wet weather, the wheels do not stay on the bike path. So they leave what is dangerous to the bikers that bike down that bike path. Typically, they don't clean up real well on what they cut, and there's a lot of branches that are left between the sidewalk and the fences of the subdivisions. And I think that we have to do better. The weight of the trucks have really deteriorated the bike path to some degree, both from frost leaving the ground as well as the heavy trucks going on it. And I think that gives us a better.
Agreed. And I think if you look at our Phase Number Four, or Phase Four is our closeout process, what we have is independent inspection of all the work. So a couple of things happen. First off, if we plan the circuit right, if we get the right number of trees removed, or vines removed, all the things you brought up. But also, one of the biggest things we're looking for, in addition to that, is was all the customer debris cleaned up? Was the work sites cleaned up? Were there ruts in the yard? Were there driveways damaged? All those things will be noted, and actually, each of the contractor has a quality metric that we measure them by. So that's a big piece of it. So that's really part of our closeout process, that we'll have eyes independent of the tree companies, looking at the work, and actually giving them a quality score on it. So debris left behind and damage is going to be a high score against them, and we'll ensure that we work with the customers and the communities to clean that all up.
Sometimes when you have a subdivision entranceway, they pull up with the walkway, and they don't hit it straight on. They hit the corner, and you sometimes have, you know, one-foot ruts, depending on the wet and soaked soil.
Sure.
And that really is a serious situation, so does it care about any liabilities with the bikers?
Sure. Yeah, in most cases, to get the equipment in, if ruts are left, we would ensure that they were put back in the condition that we found it. But you're absolutely right.
So with the fall and the winter months approaching, when you're trimming a tree, meanwhile, tree removal, will you leave the tree pieces in place until the weather clears? How's that going to happen?
Our goal is to remove the debris as close to the time that we cut the tree as possible. So if we're going to cut the tree, our goal is to remove that debris that day, so it's not leaving, so it's not left behind for the customers and the residents to see.
There was a tree on 10 Mile, and it burned. And it stayed there, keep the rest of the tree, it had to be driven by the question after numerous parts of the space.
Sure. Yeah, your questions are spot on, and why we've changed our process on the closeout and the removal of debris. The number-one complaint we get from our customers is leaving debris behind. That's the number one. Number one to us, number one to the MPSC, and you're absolutely right. We realize we're going to do better in this area. Okay? So we pretty much went through what Phase Two would look like. And Phase Three, once the trimmers start showing up, basically, at that point in time, the residents should not be at all surprised at what work's going to be done. It's a written plan that the tree trim crews would be actually executing. So all the trees with a dot should match up with the actual work plan, job plan that's numbered for that resident's property. The removals would be matched up for every tree removal permit would be there, and they would execute the work as planned. And we've seen, in the last four or five months, working this way, we've seen a lot of customer interaction with us, and there's very few surprises, if any, that happen during this phase, because they know it upfront, we've reviewed it with them, and in most cases, very satisfied with what happens. At that point, once Phase Three is done, that's when we send in our independent auditors to go in, plan, make sure the circuit was cleared the way it should have been, and all the debris was cleaned up, and the overall appearance is in at least as good a condition as we found it, if not better. And then ultimately, we would send out a customer satisfaction survey to the residents on there, and that's a way to get a voice back, and for us to continue to improve. As we've implemented this, we've learned a lot over the last six months, and I'm sure as we go forward, the residents will give us some more feedback, both positive and negative, and we'll continue to adjust to make it better. So that is our overall four-phase process, okay? The next slide, I just wanted to be able to provide for you, is called Right Tree, Right Place. And if we were going to take a look at what the best-in-the-world tree location versus our power lines would look, this would be it. So if you take a look, there's our pole on the left-hand side with some dimensions. So any tree that would never grow more than 20 feet up, and that's that first line with that ornamental tree, that would be okay for that tree to be there. And then notice, as we go out further from the pole, any tree species that's at least 20 feet tall, less than 20 feet tall and will never grow, could be within that zone. And then going further out, as the trees grow taller, the further away from the lines they would be. Now ultimately, that's not the way it is, right? We've got big oak trees and other pine trees that are really close, so that would be ideal. So obviously, we'd work with the customers and find some type of trimming alternative, and in some cases, they would, there would be some removals, but we'd work with the customers that are second away there. And by the way, this graphic is supported by the ArborDayFoundation.org. They have something called Tree Line US Fed A that we've taken this right from, and other utilities are using this with great success to say, okay, if from this point forward, if we work with all the nurseries and the homeowners and the landscape architects and say, when you're planting trees, truly look up and choose the right species, there's a number of trees that we can plant in the right place to ensure that 10 years from now, we don't have to come along and remove it or trim it, right? That's the goal, and we're hand-in-hand. We're just kicking the program off. A couple of months ago, we just started kicking it off. This is on our webpage. We're including this with our customer mailing letters that go out, we're working with the Home Depots and Lowe's and other nurseries to ensure that people, we're getting the word out, okay? So this, though, kind of gives us an idea, if you take a look at the pruning zone above, you know, that 20-foot mark, that's pretty much what we're looking for as far as clearances, okay? And depending on how that would work out, it would be, in many cases, a trim, in some cases, a removal, okay? Very good. And the very last, oh, go ahead, you have a question?
You know, Mr. Cruz, as we're listening to this, I know this is an important piece for all of us in this regard, but environmentally, you know, just the whole idea, reduce the number of trees is a concern as well. Is there any replacement-type cycle that DTE works with? I mean, I know we have a tree fund here in the city, but is the DTE doing anything with it, or are we working together on trying to, you know, for eliminating some trees in some place and getting some new ones in the right place to come and reduce that?
Absolutely. We have a, part of the DTE Foundation worked collaboratively with different communities, and we've done community-level plantings together in different areas, so that would be something that we would partner up with. Absolutely, DTE is about, we'd rather plant trees than cut them down or trim them, right? So it's two things. It's getting the word out to say, any tree planted from this point forward, let's make it look like this. And then any ones that we do have to remove with the community, we can work together on some type of community-level planting in the future, okay?
As part of the education with customers, I know there's always, you know, what's an electrical line, what's a cable line, what's a telephone line. Do you educate them so that when they're looking at what you're trimming, they're not saying, well, you're not trimming enough, and it's really just cable lines or something else that?
Yeah, great question. Part of what we do in our planning process is, we do show the customers what our, and residents, what our equipment is versus AT&amp;T or the cable company. Typically, it's at that 20-foot level. So if you take a look at this diagram of where we're showing where that tree could grow, that's typically at that level where the cable and the phone and the other utilities would be. Ours are usually the highest up, and they typically have a crossarm with the conductors on top of them, in many cases. There are some other equipment that goes below it, but it's still usually well above the 20-foot mark. But yes, the answer is yes. We do work with the residents and educate them as we do the planning. Okay? Any other questions? The last page is one that I'll let you guys look at, but it's pretty much our schedule for the city of Southfield, and the different color codes that we have represent each of the years that we've gone through. So here's the great news, DTE's been doing tree trimming in Southfield for years, right? So what's different is we just want to make sure we're communicating clearly, and that as things go forward, that we're working hand-in-hand with the customers and the community-level leaders. So you can see the color codes on where we're going to be working. This year specifically, most of our work's going to be in the south part of the city on a substation called Gary. There's about three or four circuits there we'll be working on. And then later on in the year, Hickory is on the north side, or the north end of the city up at the top. So you can see the gray areas, there's something called H-I-K-R-Y, if I can see it without my glasses. That's the substation, and all the circuit numbers that are below it are the actual circuit numbers. You can kind of see the street locations there. So I include this map just in case somebody's out and saying, hey, one's DTE going to be trimming in our area. This gives you the schedule for the next several years, okay?
I'll make a recommendation that maybe this gets on our website, so let me, what the tree trimming is going to be?
We could send this to you in format, which you'd be able to help with. Some of our other communities have asked us for that, and we've done the same.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
President, Councilbody, Mayor. Grant. Being advised that we have, the city of Southfield has received, been awarded $59,747 for the 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant. That this funding is a reimbursement to the city for a portion of the director's salary and benefits. So I'm coming to this honorable body requesting permission for the mayor and the director of Homeland Security to sign off on the grant agreement for the 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Good evening. Yeah, so Mr. Cruz has actually, I believe, stepped out of the office for a second to follow up with the DTE. People only supposed to follow up my presentation, so I'll just go forward, and then if we need to see any extra pictures, we'll go from there. So as all of you are aware, the city of Southfield, with the city of Troy, in the early 2000s, 2003, established the first, one of the first smart zones in the state of Michigan. The Michigan Smart Zone Network connects universities, industry, research organizations, government, and other community institutions to stimulate growth of technology-based businesses. So in 2003, when we originally established our zone, the city of Southfield dedicated our portion of funding towards American Drive, and we worked with the city of Troy, who established Automation Alley in Troy. Our overall smart zone is called Automation Alley Smart Zone. We are partners with Troy in that zone. So it's a little confusing, because Automation Alley is a member-driven organization, and they have over 1,000 members that span the entire region. But the key to the establishment of that area is tied to the city of Southfield and our zone. So I just want to be clear, because it's a little confusing for people that might not be aware of the relationship. Some of the council people were here during the inception and forums. But you'll all remember in 2014, the city of Southfield and Troy came before the city council and we submitted a request to the MEDC to receive one of the three designations for a 15-year extension of our Smart Zone and we were granted that. We partnered with Port Huron and St. Clair County as part of the relationship in order to move forward with that plan. And at this time, we've been working with Troy and Port Huron to...
It disappeared on us.
Okay, that's okay, we don't need it. So we've been working with our consultant from Carlisle Wardman to implement and to formalize the plan and at the next council meeting, we'll be asking to hold a public hearing, at which time, we'll be submitting the document after the public hearing with the city council's approval, we'll be submitting the plan to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and they'll have 60 days to approve the plan. So some key aspects to the plan, the city will be looking for a 15-year extension to our local development finance authority, which is part of our certified technology park, and we'll also be expanding the zone to include Lawrence Tech and property that's immediately adjacent to Lawrence Tech, which is called the Mark Plaza Building. Here's a map of our Smart Zone, so the Blue Cross properties, everyone knows where the Blue Cross property is. It's hard to see. Well, we'll be pulling up that presentation, I think.
How's it for a light?
It's okay. It's around 11 Mile and Incester. So we're going to be solidifying the area that we had originally approved in 2004 and then we'll be adding a new area, which is Lawrence Technological University. The original area will be generating approximately $14 million over the 15-year term of our capture, which includes the school taxes. Out of that $14 million, as part of this relationship, we have pledged to continue to support Automation Alley by providing $50,000 towards their organization. We will also continue to collaborate with Automation Alley, the city of Troy, Port Huron, and St. Clair for further advancement of this area for technology-based businesses. We had outlined to establish an incubator, an accelerator on the campus of Lawrence Tech to continue to make placemaking, public infrastructure improvements, and encourage infill development in our Smart Zone area and to improve the marketing and branding of this entire endeavor. Troy has, their plans are very similar to what we've outlined. They are pledging 60% of their tax capture towards the support of Automation Alley. Their capture is approximately $6 million for their area. And Port Huron, they'll have a separate designation from us, but we'll still be connected to them and they'll be pursuing their own documentation, but they'll be doing similar types of activities that we will as well. We've talked before that on the campus of Automation Alley, we will be establishing the business incubator space. That incubator will be providing a wide range of services. They'll be offering space for small businesses that are in the tech field as well as non-traditional tech businesses for support and to help accelerate the growth of those companies. We'll be working with major corporations to help small and mid-sized manufacturers that have not upgraded their facilities with the technology and computers that they need to communicate with the big three in order to stay in business in the future. Many people are hesitant to make that major expense, so we'll be working with those companies to educate their workforce and share the different experiences that they can, to help grow their business and keep them in business moving forward. And we'll also be working with Automation Alley. When they go on international business calls, we'll be offering space as a soft landing for international companies. We'll offer them a six-week worth of space and make the necessary connections for them so that they can help grow and establish in our area. Tied to this, we'll also be working with the Southfield Michigan workshop to relocate them into this facility. We feel that this will offer a strong tie to people that are looking for employment or looking to access better employment as we'll have a stronger connection with leading industries, technology companies that are in the area. We'll also be bringing new resources to the center, again, to provide greater resources to non-tech companies, people that are looking to learn how to establish a business or grow their business, if they can take advantage of different resources that Oakland County might offer or there's different small business associations, we'll be providing them space. The other thing that I mentioned that we'll be doing is creating a stronger sense of place in this actual Smart Zone area and Mr. Crowe from the planning department is here and he's going to just talk very briefly about how we're going to establish that as a subarea plan.
So you may recall that the council has adopted a previous subarea plan for the Valley Woods Senior Center area. This is consistent with the overall comprehensive plan, is designating a subarea within the larger plan. And why this is important is as we seek redevelopment, we want the land use plan to be consistent with any proposed zoning amendments. So that's the fundamental reason why we want to adopt the subarea plan. In addition to that, Carlisle Wardman has provided a presentation that talks about gateway, branding with signage, and landscape features, art, and other wayfinding elements, improvements to the walkability, providing for mixed-use development and accessory uses to support the office growth and development, and improvements to the existing park that you might want to touch on, the grant that we received.
Right. Just as a reminder, the Michigan Department of Resources grants the city of Southfield a $100,000 grant to upgrade Pebble Creek Park in the recreation area. And we're going to incorporate those funds to enhance the area and make it more walkable and allow a greater connection with the business community to that area as well as to tap into some of the resources that Lawrence Technological University is offering through their stormwater management and innovation. So we'll be incorporating all that when we're upgrading that park.
And again, the boundaries are mostly north of 11 Mile Road, Incester to the west, Center Drive and Franklin to the east, and then up here just north of I-696. This is consistent with the overlay development district subarea that the council approved earlier this year and that will be incorporated into the master plan. We have a public hearing scheduled for the subarea plan for next Monday for consideration for adoption. And again, this is to support the financing and the capture that Ms. Freeman has discussed earlier.
The other component that we will be looking for at the council meeting is we have created a very nice relationship with Carlisle Wardman. They've helped marshal us through this whole process and we would like to bring them on as a consultant to assist us with the implementation of the projects that we've identified. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, when you look at the amount of money on the cover page, why is Troy doing the heavy lifting on this? Troy expects to come up with $6 million in incremental increase and they're going to pledge 60% of that, which my calculation says about $3.6 million to support that Automation Alley.
Right.
And we're going to pledge $50,000, which ends up after 15 years, $750,000.
Right, right. So Automation Alley, they made, the physical organization made an agreement with the city of Troy that they would remain in Troy and Troy would offer the bulk of support for the organization. So it's been an agreement that they had in place for some time. So they were happy with our support of the $50,000 and Port Huron will also be providing them the $50,000 annually.
Also, it's, the stuff from the city of Southfield, to me, seems kind of nebulous. Significant public infrastructure improvement. What does that mean?
Certainly, so we have supplied for everybody copies of the plan and it does outline in greater detail, but in the past, last year, we were supportive of Federal Mobile relocating to the 11 Mile complex and we funded a portion of the road improvements out of these dollars. And so the improvements that we're going to be making have been outlined, so they'll include continuing upgrading of the streetscape with the lighting and placemaking, like Terry mentioned, with new sidewalks and better signage in that area and to continue to make the entry into the Smart Zones to have a stronger presence. We've been working with the branding company to identify a name for the area and some sort of symbol to identify it. We're looking to change some of the entry signs off the freeway to identify it as a Smart Zone area so people will have an easier way to find that location. But, so the dollars are going to be allocated towards those road improvements, the placemaking effort, the branding of the facility, and the cost for the accelerator space and the help to purchase the property where the accelerator will be located and move the workforce organization into that facility as well.
I know that it's projected that we're supposed to raise $13 million. Is anybody tracking that to find out if we're actually making that money? Because when you read through this, it says that the 696 interchange was part of the, was coming out of the $13 million.
In the past, we paid for that in the past.
Did we? Don, you did all the hard work on that to get Automation Alley started.
Correct.
Did we do the 696 interchange after we were designated as Automation Alley or before then?
Yes.
Before, we went on Automation Alley.
Then we did?
It was really confusing because we were LTU, Southfield LTU Automation Alley in the original. We had to draw on something regional in order to get the Smart Zone designation, the original Smart Zone designation. And that was the purpose, we got the county planning department to be a player in filling out open industry documents to be in on time to become a Smart Zone. So that Automation Alley was in there, but they didn't produce anything other than their help, helping put the original agreement together for the application, I should say.
Okay, then the 696 interchange, the reconstruction of Franklin Road that's in here, all of that, was that part of the Smart Zone or did we backfill that?
Well, I believe that there was a funding source that was necessary in order to fund that road and so this, the creation of the local development finance authority was used to fund that. So I wasn't working here at the time, but I believe it was all around the same timeframe and so the dollars that were captured were spent on that roadway. And so moving forward, there's always been a desire from council, from what I understand, to have an incubator space on our campus or to have one in the city. And because the Smart Zone, the goal of that is to create more technology-based companies, that's why we're looking in that direction now, but realizing that there is continuing infrastructure needs in this area and there's been a strong call for more sense of place in the whole district and to create that. So there was a past relationship, but we do have documentation that those dollars were captured and went to fund the roadway. And then moving forward, we used some dollars for the 11 Mile and to do the other things that we've identified that we're planning on doing, obviously. So, you know, that's how it was all the way down.
So what you're saying is we didn't use that 51 money to fix the roads and then took money out of the tax increment and then to repay ourselves?
11 Mile was the only one.
No, in the past, when...
The only one, Smart Zone Automation Alley, helped us with is 11 Mile Road.
In the early 2000s, the documents showed that there was dollars that were captured from this district to pay or maybe pay a portion of American Drive. So that's what the documentation shows. Perhaps it supplemented some of the Act 51 dollars, but the dollars were allocated from this to fund that road. And then just recently, as we've revised the Smart Zone and getting more involved, we have recently used new dollars that were captured that were in an account to help fund a portion of 11 Mile. So we're hoping that as these dollars accumulate, we'll have other projects that we can help support.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out which came first, the chicken or the egg?
It came to me that they were kind of simultaneous, so...
First of all, I got two words up here, communication and communication. This is a very, very important item. And this rambles on for how many pages? 52 pages of information. All, as far as I'm concerned, very important to make a decision on what this all means in terms of city of the 15 years. I attempted to go through this thing several times, I made more notes than I could read. But the big serious thing that I have is when LTU and Southfield, with the help of, I'll say Oakland County Planning Department, filed for, with the anger for an additional city to be designated, because only ten was supposed to be designated and Act 11 was approved. The idea was that if a company that is technical, a business that has technology and the two that came in as a debt company would be set to a Smart Zone city.
Yes.
And we would then use the tools that we had to negotiate Franklin City, but all 11 would have a crack at it. Council, sometimes after I left, expanded the use to include Troy. And we got the thanks from them by them putting the office in Troy instead of in Southfield with the founder of Smart Zone, right? And then it turned into Smart Zone Automation Alley. Well, Automation Alley is no longer an Oakland County resource to bring business to Oakland County. This is now a regional group. And if you go to page eight, you know, since the inception, Automation Alley has gained members in Oakland, McComb, Wayne, Washita, Livingston, Genesee, Ingham, and St. Clair Counties. Automation Alley has opened satellite offices in Sterling Heights and Detroit. As part of the request for a 15-year extension, the city of Southfield has agreed to participate in efforts at regional collaboration by providing support for Automation Alley, including but not limited to becoming a foundation member and providing financial assistance. And that's what needs is we join Automation Alley as a member of this, among this regional. So my question is, under the original 11-member Smart Zone cities, we were one of 11 people who were designated. If the state of Michigan sent the company to us, we could negotiate with it. Now, I want to know, if something comes to Smart Zone Automation Alley in Troy, where are they set? Now, we have office, Troy has mostly plants. They're totally different and so it's like, here's the... one of eleven people who were designated. If the state of Michigan sent the company to us, we could negotiate with. Now, I want to know, if something comes to Smart Zone Automation Alley in Troy, where are they set? Now, we have office, Troy has, has mostly plants. They're totally different. And, and, and so it's like, here's a little bit of money, where does it go or where does Automation push what's going on? And, and I say that is because, you know, if you read the front page of South, of, of news Sunday, Gilbert said he's not finished yet. Well, I say, well, we're not finished either yet. And so I've got to be competitive to what's happening in the marketplace. And they're going to go after everything and they have the money to do so. And, and we, sitting with thirty million per seat of office, because to me, we have to protect that because that's our sole revenue to provide service to our community. And, and if it's diluted in any way where, where we pay dues to somebody else and don't get a return, then I'm opposed to even being involved as a member. And, and tying the city up three to fifteen years to come up and have a plan, well, the plan to create a plan is one thing, to carry out a plan is another. So to create, it's going to be thirty-five hundred dollars per year, right? I think it's a month, actually, thirty-five hundred dollars a month. And, and then, once the plan is created, then we're going to have to find money to do the plan. Hold on a second. If I'm wrong, you've got plenty of time to counter me, what I'm saying. So I, number one, I don't know how much Automation Alley has done for Southfield. I don't, I think very little. Most of the funds that we have used are, are citizens' funds, like the bonding of the roadways and, and some basic assessments. Automation Alley, by creating a Smart Zone, and that really part of that group was, is now being extended, I understand, paid, we pick, we were unable to pick up all the money and tax from all of that area, just part of it. And, and so whatever came out of that area, we're not fully, we pooped.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I don't really know why. It was like that. But then, then we start spreading out to Lawrence Tech. And, and that is a great idea. It's, it's fantastic. I, I'm for it. But I hear that the building has not been acquired yet.
It hasn't, right.
So, so what are we paying fifty thousand dollars towards that building when the building isn't even owned by us or any other entity connected to us? I have a problem with that, designating funds without.
Well, can, can I, if I could start answering those questions? So in, in two thousand and three, the city established that we were going to take a Smart Zone. There was a small area that was originally designated, then it came back to city council. But the city council, those plans were never submitted officially to the state of Michigan. And that's why today, we're looking to formalize plans that were made in two thousand and four to expand the whole district, so that we will be able to capture all the dollars in the larger area that's outlined here. And it's also documented in, in the plan. So, and I do want to address the plan. So the state of Michigan said to us, when you're updating and amending this document, you need to keep the original document in place and fill, and that's why it's very hodgepodgey, the way it's written. We tried to smooth it out as much as possible and make it easier to read, but they wanted it in a certain manner so that the person who was reviewing it could see what was in the past and what is new. So it is a little confusing to read, but it reflects what was originally designated and what the new areas are. So that's why it's written in that matter. So, so that's, that's the document. And then it's, so in two thousand and four, the city council approved having a larger area, but it was never sent to the state of Michigan. And that's why at this time, we're looking to get that everything amended so it's all clarified and that we can capture the larger area that was identified, which would greatly increase our tax capture.
But at one time, the other city would be Smart Zone. And, and what happened to the other city, the other ten?
Okay.
What happened to the other ten that were Smart Zones? Did they become Automation Alley as well?
No, our, our zone.
Do they, do they still get the state delivering the package?
They, they modified.
Like Adrian?
That's not, the city, the state of Michigan does not, they might have had an original agreement in the early two thousands. They've completely modified the way that they do business attraction at this time. And so the city of Southfield is extremely active with the state of Michigan, with the Detroit Regional Chamber, with Oakland County, and with Automation Alley for attraction efforts to the region and to our city specifically.
See, that's what bothers me. No, no, stop.
They changed the rule.
But, but what you're saying is, is the region. And, and, and so we become part of a membership, paying dues.
Right.
All right? And, and all these other member counties.
No.
Throughout the state are all Automation Alley.
No, no, that's not, that's not, correct statement myself.
What?
I'm sorry.
I just read it.
No, so the.
They're all members of Automation Alley. Detroit Automation Alley. They got a big sign on Telegraph.
Right, right. They're, they're, they don't have the same type of relationships that we have.
Well, you have to explain then that relationship.
Right, right.
Because if you are part of a membership of any club and you're paying dues, you have the same rights as the little guy or the big guy.
Right, but the, so the state of Michigan designated originally eleven, and then they expanded it to add additional Smart Zones. They're scattered throughout the state of Michigan. Right now, I believe that there's fourteen of them. The state said, who wants to move forward, we'll give three Smart Zones throughout the state of Michigan the opportunity to get a fifteen-year extension.
Wait, what, the extension is what?
It's what we're asking for.
So what is it? What is the extension?
The extension.
What they provide the extension?
It's the additional fifteen years of tax capture and school tax capture for the area that we've delineated in our community to be a Smart Zone. So that's what the extra fifteen years is. So three Smart.
Does then the schools get hit also?
No, the schools held harmless. There's no impact to the schools. So there's three areas that were identified, Ann Arbor Spark, our Automation Alley, which is just Troy and Southfield for the tax capture, and Marquette. We were the three areas that originally submitted this request to the state and we were granted three. There's been a lot of lobbying efforts from the other Smart Zones throughout the state and the state legislature acquiesced and granted the additional ability for, I think, six or three or six other Smart Zones to also seek the fifteen-year extension. So we're all unique. We all have our own abilities. And our tie to Automation Alley is that us and the city of Troy both have tax capture that we can use, that we can use our taxes that we capture for our own purposes. But because we have this joint relationship with the Automation Alley zone, we've committed at our last, at a council meeting in two thousand and fourteen, that we would help support Automation Alley as part of us moving forward with this application. We have a strong relationship with the Alley. Our workforce department has a strong relationship with them that's exclusive to the city of Southfield and to the city of Troy. So that all the members.
What is your relationship when Troy negotiated to keep the office in Troy?
We.
They belong here in Southfield. I mean, I, I'm a competitor, you better know that.
I understand.
You know, I mean, we're the ones who started this thing.
Right.
And we were supposed to build a city around going after that Smart Zone. And it got diluted. Now it's getting diluted some more. And that's my concern that, that, you know, sure, we can, it allows us to take and capture taxes, all right? But I'm paying for it. I'm paying ninety thousand dollars a year to a membership so that I can graciously have them say, yes, you can do it.
Well, they will be having their international, we will have the international office here. So when there's international companies that come from abroad that are looking for a landing place, they will have space in the facility that we will be designating. So we will have them here in our community and help them find a home in Southfield. So we will have that. They're going to go on trade missions and bring people back to our area. They're also going to be offering support to our companies that we incubate and accelerate in the tech center that we're establishing, that when they get to a certain point, they're going to tap into the resources and the entrepreneurship that's available at that location, at our, at our space.
But you don't have a location.
It's, we will have a location.
When?
Well, it's under negotiation right now. And the goal is that, that Lawrence Tech will establish a facility. If not, at the building that they're looking to purchase, it will be on the campus of Lawrence Tech. It's very, we really want to keep that connection between the university and these emerging companies because they can tap into the knowledge and the, the key to this facility.
Well, I understand the purpose of it.
So we want to keep it on the campus and keep it.
And I agree with that.
We will find space on the campus.
And then buy the thing, if you really.
That they need.
Put any chips on the table, buy it and go forward.
The university, yes.
But you can't be in no man's land and then, then tell the city, start paying fifty thousand dollars to a membership.
I agree, but, yeah.
For nothing.
Correct.
For no returns.
Right. And in terms of our relationship with the city of Detroit, we've been extremely competitive and we've had many companies relocating from Detroit.
Not enough.
I know, and working hard to get far.
Not enough, not enough. And, I mean, I, I just think we, that, so we don't do enough. We're really in a, in a situation where, you know, we're the, we're the ones that are going to be the biggest losers in what's happening in Detroit. I mean, they're, they're buying buildings and approaching our people left and right, giving them all kinds of deals to move in, businesses, everything else. Seven dollars a square foot for a commercial, they don't pay in three million dollars to stock it. You know, I mean, the efforts you're bucking. And we don't have, we don't have the money to compete. We don't have Dan's money. But, but somehow, by selling what we do have, you know, we don't have to pay eighty-three bills to live in Detroit. We don't have, we have a secure city. You know, we don't pay for parking. There's a lot of things that we have that we aren't telling anybody. It's like a secret. And I want to compete with all the positive things that we have, to go head to head with, with former Southfielder Dan Gilbert.
Right.
Okay? I mean, I just, and I, and I do believe that, in my heart, that they're the ones that are stopping the sale of your land. Okay? And so I'm looking, you know, the big boy, are you looking for businesses? That's what all the notes I have so far. But anyway, I, I'm just very concerned about, about being in bed with Automation Alley and they not having to come up and say, over the period of years that we've belonged to Automation Alley, what have you delivered to them? And, and what are you going to deliver to this city in the future? And what do you say in your, in your numbers, one through ten? And, and that is, is a real problem with me. And whatever happened two thousand, two thousand and three, when everything got changed, that's what sometimes happens. But, you know, I guess the state can do a lot of things and, and call some, these programs back, they have that right. But I, right now, I got only to be concerned about the city of Southfield.
I agree.
And so I, I guess I can't go along with it until this time, as we have done some purchasing of some properties that are going to be for this.
Well, this new revenue source will allow us to do a lot, we'll have a lot more resources available that we would not be allowed to have if we weren't to move forward.
And I don't know if you're taking that, the, the other item at the same time, the work.
We would like to address that and then have to come from.
Because I have a little problem with that too. I want to know, you know, you have a Smart Zone action plan, you pay thirty-five hundred dollars a month. Are the plans going to be put forward with the city's input so that?
Absolutely.
We know what, what we can do if a plan comes out, can we, can we do what the plan says?
Absolutely.
Well, it's not absolute.
Why?
Because a lot of plans on the board ask Terry again, aren't approved, you know? And the other thing is, the first pair of other project management, and take this lightly Charlie, project management involves project identification, general project oversight and coordination, scoping and scheduling and budgeting. In this capacity, I would work directly with Shelley in determining priorities, locating and leveraging funding sources, and integrating other city personnel and consultants as needed. Well, that bothers me because council members set priorities.
Right.
And, and I believe that there's a lot of things that council does not hear and know about and, and we can see it forward. And, and, and I'll explain as mayor speaking, but I, I just think that council's got to get actively involved in all these things that are happening. When you're talking budgeting, you're talking about priorities, these are things, leveraging funding sources, this is council business.
Absolutely.
And approvals, I mean, we just, that's, that's our job.
Yeah, we wouldn't dream of not, if, if the plan was presented.
But if you really put something in writing, you know, it's signed.
Right.
It went in sign, it's put in writing.
Right. The intention was that it was local to me to the city.
But, but it's not even made out to council, it's still, so it's the administrator and Rochelle. There's nothing, there's nothing in council. Forget about mayor, and in council, not even, you haven't even got this memorandum. And, and I just think that these communications to council are vital. And you can't compete unless council knows where the weakness of the city is, where our strong points are, and how we're going to attack, and when we're going to attack, and how we're going to go forward. And that, to me, is vital in these days. That's it.
The business incubator is going to be housed at Lawrence Tech.
Correct.
What about the Southfield?
Michigan Works Office.
Is that going to be moved with the business incubator?
Correct. It will be in separate space, but there'll be, there'll be some shared space. It's our intention that Lawrence Tech is in the process of purchasing the Mark Plaza property, which is at Civic Center and Northwestern Highway. And so that they will reorganize the way that the tenants are in the building so that they can occupy, so the incubator space can occupy a portion of it and help, we'll figure out a configuration. So the Michigan Works Office has some shared space with the incubator, so we'll have dedicated space for each of them. But together, when there's different programming or for, if Automation Alley is there offering services or workshops, or the Michigan Technology Small Business Center is there kind of shared programming space. So they'll be all connected.
Okay. And then, over here, we have the estimated and the actual capture taxes. So they have the estimated and then the actual, which are very far apart.
Right.
So the thirteen or the thirteen million dollars that we're hoping to achieve, is that going to be as far off based on historical or is it, do we need to look at that as a more realistic number?
It's a very conservative estimate at this time. A city assessor puts the document together. We did take into consideration, and it was removed from the document, personal property that the companies would, are currently paying, so that's been removed. As well, the city, there are some ideal locations for redevelopment in the area, so we're hoping that the, you know, the estimates will increase greatly. But, you know, with the downturn in the economy in the past and the value of some of the properties, they, they can fluctuate. So, you know, our goal is to fill up all the former Blue Cross, Blue Shield property. There's around six hundred thousand square feet of vacant space in that park. As well, there's probably fifty vacant acres of property, as well as some opportunities for infill development, such as what's been happening on Telegraph Road and Twelve Mile, where the smaller retailers are moving up and occupying some parking lot space. So there's some opportunities for us to have infill. And we're hopeful that with all the place making efforts and new attention to that area, that we can, you know, bump those numbers up and beat the estimates, but, you know.
Realistically, I mean, based on this program. But realistically, I mean, based on this program, say that you're looking more at six million.
You know, I think that the city assessor was conservative, and it's a large area, so, um, you know, we're hopeful.
Thirteen million would be much better.
Absolutely, we're, you know, we're hopeful, we're realistic, and we're not gonna overobligate ourselves for saying that those dollars are not coming in.
I think the mayor covered most, uh, everything, covered a lot of things that they were thinking. I don't feel like this is something that we should, one project we should pick on beyond many others that I believe the city as a whole is not being competitive overall, uh, in a lot of ways. And, and I mean, and that is part of our responsibility that we have to have, with the fine plan and directions that we wanna focus our energies on. So I, I don't see this as something that should hold us up for this particular project, but actually, it's just really kind of a tough one for, uh, mayor and council saying, this should, this should be our discussion every day. What, what is, we're doing every day to be more competitive as a city, to better market ourselves, and get, and get more projects out there. So I, I'm, I'm open, you know, I don't have a major problem with any of this necessarily. The one other question I did don't have was, is there, was there any discussion with OCC as well as being part of this? Um, and only thinking that, you know, there are a lot of tech jobs that don't require four-year degrees.
Absolutely.
And there is a, is a very large pool of people that, community college, that can provide as part of this that are looking for it forward.
Absolutely, so our goal is that, um, we have some large industry companies, like Siemens and, um, some big engineering, Jacobs Engineering. They're gonna be offering classes to help educate the workforce, and to tie those directly into robotic jobs and, and tech jobs that are available right now. And we're gonna be connecting with, you know, through our workforce development department as well, people that have acquired skills that maybe need a little bit of extra education in order to move into these new technology jobs, and to make stronger connections. So we definitely have a strong relationship with Dr. Reeve, and we wanna bring all those components together at this facility. I know our workforce department works very strongly with OCC at this time. And so we'll continue to do that, and there's a lot of job opportunities available, and we wanna make that strong connection as much as possible. I would like to just say that I was just with the State of Michigan and the governor in Chicago for a blitz with site selectors. There were thirteen site selectors, and it was a two-day program. And we heavily promote the city of Southfield specifically. We have a lot of presentations that we've crafted for different industries that target tech jobs, that target, um, data, and all different ranges of technology and engineering, to, to fill our spaces, to attract large headquarters to the community. We have a really strong relationship with the people that go out internationally to attract companies. And so, you know, on our, my recent call, um, to, when I was in Chicago, it resulted in having a tech, a data center come back, and I had a meeting with them the next day. So a lot of times, it's a lot of projects, I know the city council doesn't like to hear this, but many projects are very confidential, and I can't share information. I try and keep people updated if I can, and I know, Mira, I've met with you, and I've introduced people to you on occasions that I can. But I have been very active in going out and meeting with companies and sharing the message of the city of Southfield. And we have a lot of strong partners of companies that have recently located in our community that have been a voice with us to help share that message. You know, a lot of our technology companies that have located in our community and left the city of Detroit because of the, the safe environment that we have, the safe parking, the lower taxes. They've all been very strong amenities that have attracted people to the area. And we work with those companies to help attract more businesses here to the community. So we have been trying, it does take a lot of people to get the message out, and it's very hard to compete with all the attention that's on the city of Detroit a lot. And many companies that locate here do not want an extra light shined on them because of the stress of trying to attract people downtown. But we've had a lot of success lately, and it's, it is really hard to get the word out about people, because again, they really don't want extra attention put on them. But, um, we, we do have a real strong market. In the next year, this area will hit over three thousand new people working in this area. The Travelers Tower will be, they, they lost one company, somebody who bought a smaller building in Troy, but they have a potential company relocating in there. They should be a hundred percent occupied with the DURP project filling up. It's gonna be an outstanding, um, facility that's really gonna draw a lot of attention. That's four hundred and eighty people. The Southfield Town Center has done a very active job of marketing themselves. They have a really nice video that they put out to attract more people to the area. Hello World is gonna be a huge attraction. So we, we've worked hard to bring a lot of companies here. Again, it's hard to get the visibility over Dan Gilbert and all the action that he's been doing. Uh, but we are trying, I am trying really hard to get the word out, and to keep all the council people informed of the efforts that I'm doing. Um, I do apologize for the way that the, the letter was written from Dick Carlyle. He has done a presentation to city council in the past to share a draft of the action plan, and it's really more of a framework. It does not define anything. It was, the intention was to come back and work with city council to create the brand that people want in the area. It is not his intention nor mine to define what that is. We want the city council's involvement. We've had, um, a public meeting in the Smart Zone Park when we originally started it, and gained feedback from that, and that was building when the, after the presentation was given to city council. Um, I can share, once again, the action plan that was written and presented to council last year. You know, I know that there's a lot of issues that have come forward, but there, it's definitely the intention of him and myself and Mr. Zorn to keep everyone involved and to keep that active involvement. So it wasn't our intention, so I apologize for the way the letter was written. But he has been a great resource for us, and we're hoping that his services will help us to utilize these dollars correctly with limited staff. I don't, he has really any staff people working for me, so he was going to be the conduit to keep things moving for this project. Um, so, um...
I have, I have a few questions, because we have been working on this for a very long time. And I hear the mayor's comments. Um, we still have a lot of unknowns here. And to move forward, there's always the unknown. Lawrence Tech has to, uh...
Right.
Uh, not only will we have to pay the fifty thousand a year for our Automation Alley, the city council has to commit another, what is that, um...
Fifty, yeah.
Fifty thousand, uh, a year to move the offices over to the facility. Um, one of my main concerns, again, is we're using someone where we haven't gone out for years with them. So we're putting, which is kind of sliding somebody into a contract. So I've got some concerns with that.
Sure.
And it's too big to rush and judgment.
Absolutely.
I mean, I think the unknown needs to be solved first.
Look, if I could speak to the building, um, at, um, at Lawrence Tech, if they do not purchase the building, then we will not be supporting them at all, number one. So that's the first thing, that if...
We will not be supporting them.
We won't be, we won't be giving them money for the purchase of the, to help underwrite the purchase of the property and to support our offices moving in there. If, if there's, if they're not able to purchase the property, that goes away right away. So, and if there's at any point, um, the accelerator doesn't work out, that that space can all be, always be leased, or there's other options for the city, but we would not move forward. If they're not gonna move forward with the purchase of the property, or something, if there's a hiccup in that plan, then our support would, would go away. Um, in terms of supporting Automation Alley, I, I, I understand that they're not located in our community, but they have been a wonderful resource for many businesses that are in our community. They've supported the growth of many technology companies that the city of Southfield has actually supported through tax abatements over the years, Secure Twenty-four, member-driven technologies, Lear, Denso. They, they've all used Automation Alley and the resources that the alley offers to help grow their businesses. They have been a very strong resource. And I, I do understand that they're not located physically in our community, but they do come out and they, they reach out to a lot of other resources. They're known federally and nationally. They've been recognized by the, the President of the United States, and they've, he's been up to that office. So we do have a strong tie, and they're, again, it's a commitment that was formed in, in the early two thousands that if we're able to move, to cap the additional money, it's something that is, um, all part of the development of the overall plan. So, um, so, you know, that's, that's where we're at. Um, at the public hearing next week, I, you know, I hope that we could just have the discussion. Again, this is gonna be submitted to the State of Michigan, and there's another sixty days in which the state discusses what, what's been submitted to them as well. So it's still a long way to go. This is kind of like them, that, getting closer to the end, but there's still, um, some other milestones that have to be reached as well. So I, you know, I understand some of the concerns, and I hope to address them over this week, if, if I can.
But you, you haven't talked about the gentleman, uh, that you were talking about, the contract with.
Carlyle Warman, they hit...
What did you go out for, what are the proposals going to be, just going with the...
I understand. They, they did have a strong relationship with us to help us get to this point. They came from, from Troy when they brought the document forward and helped us craft the document. So we've had, just moving forward to the last year to, to get everything where it is. Um, you know, it's been important to help us to, to get the whole plan put together. I understand what the concerns are, and, you know, we can table that item, that's fine. That's not, um, you know, we can discuss that at, at a later date, I understand that. The, the main thing is to, to meet at the plan, to move that forward to the state, which is really our number one issue.
And again, you're saying that the business incubator space will have space for technical and non-technical.
All businesses, absolutely.
And that's kind of the...
And the services that we offer through the facility and through Michigan Works Office, it's open to all businesses, large and small, that are here in our community or looking to come into the community. We've always had a very open door policy. We work with all different size companies and all different formations. We will have a lot of different workshops to help people grow and to stay in our community. We'll have resources to help them find office space in the city, and to help them accelerate, take advantage of all the different resources that are in the area. There's a tremendous amount of resources to help people grow their business. And right now, they're kind of scattered, and this place will help formalize that and give us a stronger place. We can host a lot of workshops. We have a lot of companies that, that are located here, that, that have services that they can help share with the other business community. We hope to put together a calendar and have someone help organize all those things. We can have people offer workshops if they're a Southfield company and they have something to share with other businesses. We're gonna have a very open environment there. But we definitely wanna help people grow their business in Southfield, non-Ortech, doesn't matter.
I wanna look at the, I just want to, the hub area plan. Do you think it's a boundary again? I know that Inkster, some of the town, part of the tree way over there.
So Inkster, Eleven Mile, it goes to Center Drive, this is Franklin, and then north of, um...
The Watson Wyatt Building is?
I-696, move it northwestern and Franklin.
One Northwestern Highway.
Up to where it connects.
Yeah. And that area, originally, when they did American Drive, I believe that that area was designated because there was some, there might have been, the condos were located over there that the city sold. That was all kind of part of, that's why that area was included originally.
Dan, maybe we'll be...
Yeah, I just, I'd just like to make another comment. Um, everything does, Shelley, I know you're working hard at what you do. All I'm trying to say is that this is an elected body. And, and you can say all the things that has been done, all the work you have done, unless this body knows what is being done. They sit here, not even being able to, to, to talk about the gluttons happening in the city, or even the, the kind of companies that are looking to Southfield. Um, things may be confidential, but if we can't trust this body, the whole thing's close to them. And you're being competitive, or hold it to this economic development team that, that knows where you're going, how you're getting there, uh, where you've been, how, what you're attracting, uh, you know, it's all for naught. Because you don't, getting here, you'd have to be here as the mayor even, and, and realize how out of whack you are with this going on. And the only time I did it, I go to the economic club, and I hear more from that economic club, I hear from my own staff people, and what's going on in the area and the region. And I don't like that, I really do not like it. I wanna be part of an economic team, I wanna be able to, to go out and, and among these corporate people and not feel like, like I can't approach them because somebody else is approaching them, somebody else is cutting a deal, whatever it is. I mean, when I was mayor part of this, I mean, that's what I did.
I understand.
And, and we had an economic development team that worked very hard, and that every Thursday, we accomplished a lot, and you see the results of it. And, and I just don't see that today. I just don't see, uh, council being a part of what's happening. And I don't know what it takes to get the, the council to put up their right hand and say, I won't say a thing, or whatever. But I'm telling you, you have to be communicated with to know the city that you're trying to build.
Sure, well, I will make a better effort to inform everybody.
I'd like, I'd like, this is the survey basis. We talked about a lot of things. You talked about three or six more, uh, communities that got an extension, fifteen-year extension. When somebody decides that they're gonna come in from Europe to come to this area, how do we know that they're coming? Who, who tells us that they're coming? So we have a, a shot at it. And how do we know that they're not going over to those other seven or eight communities?
So right now, the process for reaching out and, and business attraction is there's a team that's composed of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. There's a group of people that work for the state that go out and they, it's sort of, if a company were looking originally, then going to the state of Michigan, they would contact, there's a small group of people that are in the state. And so, that's one group that a lead would come into. Then there's the Detroit Regional Chamber of Commerce, that is another lead group. They go out and they go internationally, they go to trips to China and Japan, they go all over the world trying to attract businesses. So there's that group of people. And then the county also has people that go out internationally to, to do attraction as well, so...
No, this company's already made their mind up, they're coming this way. And maybe, in the interest of time, we oughta not talk about it anymore, but set up a, a meeting.
Exactly, absolutely.
You can take us through the process, so that we work, we'll know. Because, like Dan says, we don't know what we don't know.
Right. I'd be happy to do that, and I'll work with the council president to make arrangements. But it's kind of a crapshoot, and we hope that our website, so if someone's looking...
I wish you hadn't said that.
Well, but a lot of stuff is, when someone's looking, like, for a, for a location, and they don't know anybody, they Google you, I mean, that's what people do. At two o'clock in the morning, a company does a Google search. And if you come up and you have a strong network from your website and a strong presence on your page, you know, that's how people find you a lot of times. So, I mean, we have to be all different places, all different times, and I'd be happy to share what, what I do.
So something that you got a lot of work in.
But I just, businesses tell me that they can't get through, I wish, they can't get through.
So I'll, I'll be happy...
It's not easy to get through.
We, I'll be happy to set up a meeting and share with you, um, what, what we're working on.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't go ahead. I think we should have regular meetings with you.
Absolutely.
And, uh, we should, we have to decide how often, but more than once a month. Um, at least once a month, perhaps more.
Sure.
Because we all have things that we know in Detroit, and we, we wanna keep this kind of in the family. But we do feel like we're sitting in the dark, and, and that's not good. We all know people, we all have connections, and it's just, it's just, it's just a, what shall I say? An attachment that shouldn't be. So I, I think we're gonna be trusting not to spill the beans when something's confidential. But, um, I appreciate your presentation, I'd show it, we may be more involved.
Sure, I'd be happy, I'll work with Sylvia, and we'll make those arrangements.
Did you write up on the table, and I suggested the, uh, Smart Zone, um, Automation Alley, and then the second theory, um, possibly moving forward, being Richard Carlyle's contract? Um, so let's take them both separately. If we're moving forward, we're just doing this on the Automation Alley Smart Zone. If we're moving forward, we're just going to focus on the automation alley smart selling. What's that, would you mention?
I have a, I have a question. The, the two items on the boundary amendment and the sub-area plan, what is the, the contract called under which?
It was in the, it will, it will just pull it out. That's, that's fine. It'll just be removed out.
Okay.
That's fine. But the, the plan itself, the amendment and the, right.
Are you interested in moving forward with both or just with one?
With both.
Okay. Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, um, absent, well, Alex, I guess, yeah.
Yes, definitely.
With both. I'm going to say yes for the next one and no. Yes for the first and no for the second. What you have on.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, the next one, uh, I think it's, I'll be, I'll be. They can't sue Mr. Crowe, it's good.
As you may recall earlier in the year, our office got an inquiry about opening up soup kitchen. And when we started looking at our ordinance, we didn't specifically address soup kitchens or homeless shelters. And you directed us to come back, uh, to, uh, give you a preliminary finding. And, uh, we reviewed a number of ordinances. First thing we would need to do is to define emergency shelters for the homeless and soup kitchens. There was discussion that there was a social service need, especially with religious institutions, to provide emergency shelter on an as needed basis. And that, um, yearly shelters have a rotating week where they provide emergency shelter and possibly soup kitchen services. And we wanted to, um, continue to offer that. So when an emergency shelter for the homeless or soup kitchens are ancillary to religious uses, they can continue under the existing definitions. Ancillary uses consideration is conditional upon the following, that the shelter and meal service, uh, is for seven or more recipients is limited to two weeks per calendar year and one week at a time maximum. And that, that would allow that rotating, um, services to continue throughout the year. And that there will be limitations on the duration of six or fewer recipients of shelter and meal service at a time do not apply. So if they provide emergency shelter and soup kitchens for six or less, religious institutions can provide that throughout the year. If it's more than seven, then they're limited to one week, um, or, uh, or no more than, um, two times a year. Now, when we were looking at standalone, um, emergency shelters or soup, um, soup kitchens, they would be through the special use approval in either the RS Regional Shopping District or the three general business district. And we would have, um, similar separations as we had for other, uh, special uses like alternative financial institutions, tattoo parlors, pawn shops and so forth. And, um, there's a separation between each other, there's a separation with residential, a resident manager and support services are required on site, must be operated by, operated by a recognized human service agency, a religious institution, must be located on a major thoroughfare and not have occupancy greater than thirty persons. And similar requirements for soup kitchens, again, must be operated by a recognized human service agency, religious institution. They must provide proof of license or approval of the Open County Health Department. Seating shall be provided, uh, at a hundred percent of the meal service capacity so that we don't have long lines of people out down the block, so to speak. And again, um, this would have a maximum occupancy limited to fifty persons. Similar to other uses, we've charted out potential locations, there's seventeen potential locations. But once, um, some of these get established, it eliminates others because of the distance requirement. And again, it would also require the landlord of a shopping center to allow this use to happen. So basically, um, that's what we found, we're, uh, in summary, working with human services, Ms. Rhonda Terry and the legal department, we came up with these base plans. Our moratorium expires on August twenty-second and therefore we're asking for will ten tonight to extend this an additional, um, period of time. Um, if, if council wants us to move forward, then by the time we schedule this with planning commission, get through the public hearing process, it's likely going to be November. With the short turnaround in December, we could be back to council in January. Then if you, if you scale out your introduction and approval, thirty days to February and then another fifteen days for publication, we're talking March fifteenth. Now it's likely we, we could maybe knock off a month, but we're asking for the full two hundred and five days just to give us enough time to go through the both, the planning commission, public hearing process and city council. So this is, all we're asking for tonight is some feedback and to extend the moratorium so that we can properly take this through the process.
If a church or a religious institution, nonprofit, has a school in it or a childcare facility, does that then exclude them from one of these because of the distance?
No. Remember, um, existing religious institutions can provide it as an ancillary service, six and under throughout the year. If it's more than six, then it's limited to two weeks per year, no more than one week at a time. It's just so that because many of these religious institutions are located in residential districts, that it was felt that that intensity of use, um, would have an adverse impact on residents. At the same time, their mission of religious institution to provide social services and we didn't want to handcuff them so much that they can do that.
The other question is, the moratorium expires Saturday?
That's correct, that.
And we have a meeting on Monday. If we waited until Monday, we had a two day last.
In theory, somebody could come in and submit an application on Monday.
Not likely, but possible. So.
And that's why we're trying to cover ourselves. And we, we were, we were here in the spring, but based on the workload of the council's agenda at the time, we were asked to come back in August, just in time that before the expiration of this particular moratorium.
Understood.
And, and Ms. Ward, there is a provision under the moratorium, if there's some unusual need, someone can petition the council to come in for that.
There's hardship potential that if somebody feels that, you know, the, the moratorium deprives them of really any use, viability of their property because of the religion of the moratorium, they can come in and make their case to council and council could allow them the use even though the moratorium isn't in effect. So there's kind of a safeguard provision there.
Have we felt, has there been anybody inquiring at all?
Well, we just.
Just the one earlier.
Just the one earlier.
Besides that.
No, we have not had any follow up.
That's, that's.
We want to be proactive, right? But, but it's not like we have a, a number of calls.
People calling them.
Yeah, uh, it seems that churches have been doing this for some time. They've regulated how often they can have, um, the homeless, uh, in the, the church say rotated them, as you mentioned. I mean, why is this, why isn't it going to be part of the ordinance? I mean, they've already, they've already controlled it.
Well, it's, it's been on the under system and I think that, um, we haven't had a situation where the church has provided these services more than a couple of weeks a year. And I stand to be corrected, but, so we just want to make sure again that the safeguards are in place, um, that, uh, should a religious institution, um, consider doing this year round, that there's some protections for the neighborhood. Now again, they can, they can do this year round if it's six or fewer. It's about the number and quantity. And again, this is all up for, for discussion for the council. This is our first attempt at coming up with a balance between what religious institutions currently do and what a not-for-profit standalone may want to do.
The, the other thing that, when I read through this, it says, I mean, you address eating, but not sleeping. And that's what churches do in the winter time when homeless people don't have a place to go, they bring them in for a week at a time, they feed them and they let them sleep there.
Right. And again, um, there's, uh, regulations for emergency shelters up to thirty persons and then soup kitchens allow for fifty persons. And there's some slightly different overlapping, uh, requirements for each. One institution can, can provide both, but then they would have to comply with both the standards.
Yeah, some, some of it's separating the, on this, the emergency, the one week, not more than a couple of times a year. I, I, I think they've controlled it and I can't imagine a, a religious organization that wants to, in their current location, have homeless shelters.
Well, if I could, in, in a community that I worked at, the rescue mission provided year-round emergency services for more, more than the thirty number of beds. And there are other federally funded emergency shelters. I don't believe our community has those, but many other communities are federally funded to provide these types of services year-round and at a greater quantity than we currently are doing on our own.
I'm not arguing that.
Yeah.
The point that I'm, I'm trying to make is, an established religious organization, a church, a synagogue, um, suddenly becomes a homeless shelter. I mean, and, you know, on Saturday morning or Sunday morning, where does the congregation go? I mean, I'm, I'm having a hard time mixing the two of them. And I don't have any problem with, uh, a federally funded, um, center that is a homeless shelter, um, but that's, to me, that's different than, uh, a religious, a church or a synagogue.
Again, this is, this is up for councils.
Right. I mean, I think the intent here was to say that because churches so often are situated in residential zones, property, single family, that if a church were to say, uh, you know, maybe we have an attached school, the school's not operating anymore, why don't we just make that a homeless shelter? You could have a whole wing now devoted to a homeless shelter in a, in the middle of our neighborhood where that was never really what the intent, that, that the church, you know, basically is a, is a, a use that would be on certain days more so than others. Now the intensity, if it had, if it opened the whole wing up for a homeless shelter, does that, does that, you know, mesh well with the surrounding single family neighborhood? So again, six may not be the number, but it was an attempt to say that we, we know that the, the churches have the rotating homeless shelter where they, they go and you have, you have a number of residents for a week and you feed and you house them and then the next week they go on to another institution. So if they wanted to do it at that location year-round and it was part of their mission statement, that we just felt six, six or under is a number that would be manageable and really doesn't, doesn't act to a detriment of the neighborhood. But it also, it, it also satisfies that mission that the, that the church and synagogue may have. So again, trying to find a middle position in here where if it, you're right, I mean, a church that has a space issue isn't going to use the whole thing for a year-round homeless shelter, that, that, they don't have room for their services now and I, and I get that. But if they did and they wanted to just promote a homeless shelter, is that the best use next to the neighbors?
You know, every time one of these things comes up, we'll go through my mind as a cat on a leash. And, you know, there were folks on the, that came and pleaded, would cats go outside, you have to have a leash on them.
Yep.
And you have to have a leash on them because they're around, kill birds and baby rabbits and stuff like that. Sounded plausible. But when you step back and think about it, you know, clearer, clearer headed way, um, putting leashes on cats is, uh, yeah, it boils down to, just because we can, should we write an ordinance that, that handicaps churches from doing what they normally do now? I mean.
Because you're saying we haven't seen where a church has operated a homeless shelter to the detriment of the neighborhood.
That's right.
So in all these years, we haven't seen it. And I think that really what prompted this was, because you're right, it, it has been through the, kind of the rotating, we haven't seen anything of a magnitude. But with, with somebody calling this year and saying, hey, I want to open a soup kitchen and make, it, it brought to mind that we don't have anything that would address it.
I don't have any problem with a soup kitchen. I, that's, that's not part of an established church.
Can you think of hungry? You, I mean, couldn't it be?
And I don't even have, I don't even have a problem with the churches, the, the series of churches that cooperate with each other.
Yeah.
And rotate for a week at a time.
Right.
It's, it's kind of like at my house, if one of my family's, uh, extended family came to visit me from, you know, California and they, they didn't want to stay in a hotel, so we dolled up by the beds and, you know.
Yeah.
And sat in the backyard and ate and everything else. Are we going to write an ordinance that says you can't do that because your house is only supposed to have four people in it? Now, now you've got ten for a week? You know, emergency situ, I don't know that we can ordinate, write ordinances for emergency situations.
If, if I could, the, where we came up with the numbers, the federal government defines family as related individuals plus six unrelated individuals. And, and that's where we, we use the threshold of, of six unrelated individuals or less. It could go year-round and you could have six unrelated individuals in your home. That's why the smaller group homes are not regulated, they're treated as single family. You could have six unrelated people living in a home and they're considered family by the federal government. And again, this is a starting point, Mr. Frazier. I mean, we're here to get input and if this doesn't make sense, um, this is what we're going to flush out over the next several months.
Maybe I should, it's making the whole deal a little bit better this morning, but it just clangs like a broken bell when I, when I read that. And it, okay. Anything I say is going to be repeated.
Is there a clause for a national disaster where a church needs, needs immediate access to help a home?
We could investigate that.
Yeah. As, as declares emergency by the governor or the mayor or somebody. Sure. It, 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 there could be.
An exemption?
Some understanding, yeah, sure.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, um, I think it's probably going to, to, I'm not sure. Has anybody talked to the churches about this, specifically?
There, there was a meeting that the administrator put together and had some of the faith-based organizations and, and human services. And I think that was an attempt to kind of gauge and assess what services are being provided by some of the, the faith-based.
And what would they.
I think we, I think they answered, well, I wish we were here, but it wasn't really the issue. It wasn't that or that.
I, I raised the issue that we were going to study it.
Yeah.
And Mr. Zorn directed us to work with Rhonda Terry.
Okay.
From Human Services and she's part of the committee that came up with this first plan. We haven't gone further than that and that's what we could do over the next coming months is to do additional input.
I think, I think it would be good to talk to the churches and find out if they're using what and what would they like to do. What are important, what would they like to, what kind of restrictions does everything? They, you know, we, we need to talk to people who's involved in it.
Definitely. This could, this draft could be circulated.
Circulated. But, but you're going to have a meeting.
Of course.
Sure, sure.
Yes, of course.
About having them all together and say, what's your people looking at? You know, they're a problem. What are you doing now? What would you like to do? I mean, we need to talk to them.
Again, the moratorium will give us, allow us that time to do that.
I think it's essential that we ask them to talk to them. What are they capable of doing, what would they like to do?
Mm-hmm.
That would help us a lot. I think a lot better, they know their neighborhood. They know what it's going to be, how it's going to be.
And there is a request for a little ten to be.
I think that we have a little ten.
What are we looking for?
Sixteen or more.
Oh.
We have a motion by the county on, on. Yeah, motion by Mr. Manheim, on paper, on paper.
All in favor? And opposed? I move that we extend an additional two hundred and five days until March 4th, 2016, the moratorium in regards to the establishment of soup kitchens and homeless shelters. Mr. Zorn?
Yeah, motion by Mr. Manheim, on paper, to establish a new...
And I just want to say, and when I pray churches, I mean, in all religions, synagogue, synagogue.
Cemetery. That's within the rule.
All in favor? Thank you.
Listen there, I don't know why, but there's a...
So, the proposed opening tax amendments that are before you receive, really were derived by a request from the Department of State Enforcement. Specifically, there are two that I think Ray Shalhoub would consider would be helpful to them in their prosecution efforts and even just abilities to work with projects. A lot of residents will have discussions on whether the ordinance really applies to a situation. So, the first one is in regards to section 562.7. Right now, that section says that you cannot have an unlicensed motor vehicle sit on a property for more than seven days. And the Department of State Enforcement would like to add to that for a disabled motor vehicle. Either one of those cannot sit on a property without moving, be moved for seven days or longer unless it's in an I-1 district, industrial district, or it's entirely within a building. So, if you have a car that's not running, if it's in a garage, you have no problem.
How would you know it's unlicensed?
I'm sorry?
How would you know that it's unlicensed?
Well, they check.
You can't go on the property.
Well, you see it, if you saw it from the street.
If you back, if they back it in.
You're right, those become very practical issues that they struggle with. People do that, too, they back it way up, too, so there's no way that you can see it. But if it sits there for long enough, I assume you guys would check the... Well, a way to combat that is typically the driveway, if the garage sits in front of the front door, I have the ability to approach the front door, and it's not that hard to see because the stickers change colors each year. So, typically, I can see that the sticker is indicating that the tag may have been done, so we'll pursue our investigation more from that perspective.
Well, it's practical, isn't it?
Well, even still, it can't sit in the driveway for a period, for a period of time. So, that's the first one, we dealt with them pretty simple, actually. And then we're adding a definition of disabled motor vehicle so everybody understands what that would mean. The second one is in single-family residential districts, 5.62. It was a very cumbersome provision that existed, so I think what Ray and I sat down and tried to do is, what is it that code is wanting to work with the residents? Because the issue is, you can have a lot of different types of vehicle on your property. So, you can have your car, you could have a commercial vehicle, like if you drive for your work, or you're a mechanic or something, you could have a recreational vehicle, you could have a boat, and you could have a trailer. So, you've got all these vehicles, how many of them can you have on your property in a single-family neighborhood? What's the size of them? Can you have a forty-foot boat sitting in your driveway? Can you have a fifty-foot RV? So, the intent here was to sit and try to make this section so that not only the city understands what it means, but residents mean what it is. And you can point to it, and you can say, here's what the section says, and here's what it means. So, it's a kind of a base concept here. The deal is this, in a single-family residential neighborhood, you can have, obviously, your car, you could also have one of each of the following vehicles. You can have a boat, you can have a RV, you can have a commercial vehicle, and you can have a trailer. Now, if any of those vehicles are more than twenty feet, they have to be kept in a garage or you can't keep them on the property. So, more than twenty feet of any of those vehicles, they can't be there unless they're in the garage. If they're less than twenty feet, you can keep them in your rear yard, all the way in your rear yard. So, it's kind of a simple, twenty feet or more in a garage or not on the property, twenty feet or less in the rear yard. Then, we also deal with the commercial vehicle, what if you have a commercial vehicle that is less than twenty feet again, but you're driving it for your work and your transportation as well? It's kind of your, kind of a combined vehicle, you use it for both. That can actually stay in your driveway for periods of not more than forty-eight hours while it's not in use. So, that would not have to go into the rear yard, which is what we would say generally, if it's something that you're driving generally every day for use, as a passenger vehicle as well as your work vehicle.
That's correct.
That's a problem?
Yep. Somebody works eight to five.
Mm-hmm.
Friday afternoon, they come home six o'clock at night.
Uh-huh.
So, they don't have to go back to work until eight o'clock Monday morning. So, six o'clock Friday nights, six o'clock Saturday nights, twenty-four.
But remember, this is where you're using it also for your vehicle, your passenger vehicle.
That's not what it says, it just says, a commercial vehicle.
Well, it says, if any commercial vehicle is being used as a daily mode of transportation for an occupant of the residence, so that's their transportation, not just work, that's their method of transportation.
You do realize that there are employees that drive a company vehicle home.
Yeah.
And they work from their house.
Yeah.
But drive their own vehicle if they're going to go to the store.
Right, so then that wouldn't qualify for the section, and that thing needs to be in the rear yard if it's less than twenty feet. It's allowed on the property. The only issue is, if it's being used as a daily mode of transportation, so you're combining it, I have a truck because I do roofing, but that's my vehicle, too, so I go get my groceries, so I'm using it for both. I can have it in my driveway now, I don't have to put it in the rear yard. Whereas if it's a commercial vehicle like you're describing, that an employee brings it home, but they don't use it for their normal, just everyday driving, it can come on the property, but it has to be in the rear yard. Am I still right, Ray?
Sure.
Okay, I don't want to miss stuff there. But that's my understanding of the way they see this working, and that we get it down into something, so you can still have it. You drive it home on a Friday night, and you can't drive it till Monday.
It works out of its house. It works out of its house.
Then it's got to be in the rear yard, you have to put it in the rear yard. That's all but the same. Not saying you can't have it unless it's more than twenty feet.
I think that's onerous. I think that's onerous, I think you should extend it to maybe seventy-two hours so it covers the weekend.
In the driveway?
In the driveway.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. And again, we're just trying to get this so that you can really explain to people, here are what the rules are. And that's, it's just been a problem of how this thing was worded, what it intended, and if we can all get on the same page of what we intend here and get it down, I think it's going to make their life and probably their...
He's talking about, I agree with that.
Okay, we can make something, too, then. Okay. And I wasn't looking for any rule tensioning tonight. I was just, if the council was interested in this, and you were in support with that change, we'll get it back to the planning commission, get their recommendations in, or come to you in a public hearing a couple of months from now.
Quick question, what if it was a holiday weekend, you make over the seventy-two hours?
A holiday weekend, the code enforcement doesn't, the code enforcement doesn't work on a holiday weekend.
It would work, it would work twenty-three hours.
The code enforcement would... They must work at somebody else's.
But if it's a holiday, your week, just don't look for commercial vehicles. I mean, we need to give them a special ticket. That would be how I know that sitting there for seventy-two hours, if I'm not there every day to check it over.
That's the other problem, just how do you know? I mean, you had to drive by, but it's, you know, it's only reasonable if it, does it look like it moved? That's a judgment call.
If the person drives it in my department, he's just, you know, the same spot each day.
Right, yeah.
Smarter with trucks. They'll please you with you.
You go by there, and it's still quiet.
Yeah.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Mullin. My address is Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. At the last CLW that was held here on July thirteenth, 2015, this council voted three to two to discuss in the near future the renaming of the Veterans Memorial Garden after Councilman Lance. I have three reasons why this renaming should not take place. Reason number one, I believe it is unethical to raise this issue while Mr. Lance is a candidate for public office. Why should Mr. Lance be singled out to receive favorable publicity while the other seven candidates for council are ignored by this body? This is the moral equivalent of rigging the election. Has Southfield now become a little Chicago? Reason number two, why should one Southfield veteran, in this case, Mr. Lance, be singled out over five thousand other Southfield veterans in the renaming of this memorial? Reason number three, this issue should be vetted prior via the Southfield Veterans Commission before placing it on council's agenda. If you folks wish to honor Mr. Lance, I would suggest that you wait until after the November election before any consideration be given on this issue. Then I would recommend that this council rename Lincoln Woods Park to Lance Park. This green ten-acre bridge that was built over I-696 over twenty-five years ago in deference to the Jewish community would be a fitting and lasting tribute to Mr. Lance. Thank you, Madam President.
Two four eight three four six zero four three nine. I'm appalled that this city has not entered into fair labor negotiations with the real talent, the employees of the city of Southfield. Remember, employees have not been given raises in eight to fifteen years, employees are paying more money for their medical insurance premiums, and will have nothing to look forward to when they retire. So much for the golden years of R and R, rest and relaxation. We need to question the commitment of some of the administration and elected officials of this city. None of you have taken concessions, like the concessions and sanctions you have imposed on our employees. With the $3.2 million spent for the parking lot across the street, the $2 million or so spent to purchase Northland, and $500,000 for the Bear Boy statue, how many retro raises could this administration give to our employees? I'll answer that, a lot. It is purported that the demolition and cleanup of Northland is expected to cost an additional eight to ten million dollars. Wow, more raises, restoration of those concessions. If the city does this investment, as you call it, will you get a shopping cart and sell the scrap metal like the brothers on the streets? Now, let's get to the building department. How dare you act as if our building department is not pulling their own weight? It was this administration that forced concessions and made life so miserable at work that these people chose early retirement. They chose to get out before you demand more concessions. Fred Zorn, who's not here, I think he would prefer to be an emergency manager for Governor Schneider instead of Southfield City Administrator, along with Wade Trimm. These guys have browbeat the employees so much that their spirits are broken and morale is low. Remember, it was this city that chose to hire no new inspectors. It was this city that decided on the more for less concept. This city waited for Fred Zorn to get this permanent position as city administrator to bring in his buddy from Lincoln Park and Pontiac to completely dismantle Southfield's building department and outsource everything. Mayor Farcasi, I appreciate what you said, that this council should vet the issues a little bit more and not take the word of consultants and Fred Zorn. You need to check the figures, and when in doubt, go to the employees, you know the drill, ask them. So, check the figures of the building department. And lastly, I want to say, does the ordinance or the contract of this consultant, Wade Trimm, require that he's a certified building official? I want to know, have you checked the credential? Is he certified? And I'd like a response.
Good evening, thank you for being awake long enough to hear from us. Appreciate it. You got a big job that you're doing. I have a complaint that I want to make you aware of. I'm not asking for you to provide any particular action, just a list of complaints, and to use your good judgment when the time comes to evaluate the service that is provided by Waste Management E. On the morning of June 25th, 2015, I left my home to meet my friends to play golf, and I walked out the front door because they were going to pick me up, we went all right together. I saw my neighbor across the street, and I went over to talk to him while I was waiting for my friends to come and pick me up. In the meantime, there's happened to be trash there. I had already put out my trash in cans, I live in a house, there's a circular drive, and put our trash in the street because we run the sidewalk. So, my trash was in the cans on the left side and the circular drive. I talked to my friend on the right side of the circular drive, and I laid my golf clubs in my driveway, not in the street, and they were approximately twenty-one feet inside the driveway while I was talking to my friend. While we were standing there talking, the waste management truck came down the street, I saw them empty my garbage cans and put them upside down, empty as they always do, continued on down the street. They stopped right in front of my friend and I while we were talking, and I'm standing in his yard across the street from my property, and they picked up the trash for his next-door neighbor, and then they continued on. Two seconds later, my friends drove up to pick me up in the car to go to play golf, told my friend goodbye, went over to pick up my golf clubs, they were gone. Trash truck picked up my golf clubs and my golf shoes and threw them away. So, we jumped in the car, we ran, we called them, right outside the soup kitchen, and called them, and told them what had happened. They stopped the truck, they tried to back them out, and when they backed them out, they were completely destroyed. They were reduced to little pieces of chimping. I mean, those trucks can really tear up some stuff. And so, a call was made for their supervisor, supervisor came, he looked at the situation, he said, this stuff is completely ruined, he called the officer of Waste Management and reported it. They called me, very apologetic, and said, well, we will do what we can to make it right. To make a long story short, because I only do have three minutes, I have been unable to secure what I would consider to be proper restitution for my golf clubs. I did provide Waste Management with an estimate of what it would cost to replace them, and this is what I got from Carl's Golf Land, is that my tan? Okay, all right, I'll wrap it up real fast. The main thing is, the people at Waste Management have not been very accommodating or even serious about dealing with me as a customer. And I did approach the offices here, and the city has been very supportive in trying to speak to them, but they still have not responded. This occurred on June 25th, it's now almost August 25th, and I was given a proposal over the phone for $500 to replace my golf clubs. my golf clubs. What it actually costs to replace all the things that were in my golf bag is about $3,000. And that's not using the most expensive equipment available, that's just the stuff that I had. So I just want you to know that I'm very disappointed in Waste Management, and I don't feel that they are operating in the best interest of the residents of Southfield. Thank you.
What's the letter in our bank? Right.
You got a clearly expressed disclosure with Waste Management. Unfortunately, it is beyond our control of force in sort of acts in this regard, although Mr. Shane's point that this should be taken into consideration on contracts are considered to be relevant.
I probably don't look like Vivian Dekow. My name is Larry Sherman. Good evening, Mayor Ficassi, Madam President, Council. I'm the attorney for the licensee and the property owner at 28725 Everett, and we have filed the certificate of recognition form in order to request that we be placed on upcoming council agenda for consideration for increasing the existing group child care home located at the address on Everett from a maximum of six minor children to seven up to 12. Now, I should indicate to the council, by way of background, almost a year ago, Ms. Dekow was here representing herself, and she received unanimous approval from the planning commission and was referred to council. And after representing herself and presenting this matter to council, a motion was made to approve the request, which was supported. The request failed by a 3-3 tie vote. We've been attempting to get on the council agenda but have been unable to do so at times this summer. We are asking strictly for the opportunity to come before council to make a full presentation based on new and additional information that we have for the council to consider this request. By way of background, the children are from ages of two months up to five years of age, pre-kindergarten students. This same family, this same applicant has a pre-existing childcare group home located in the city of Southfield that's been operating for 12 years, and they have up to 12 minor children at that location. There have been no issues with code enforcement, there have been no issues whatsoever. If given the opportunity, we feel that we will be able to present information to council that the neighbors, there's been an outpouring of support from the neighbors. We are prepared to address any issues that are germane to council on this topic. There have been additional fire inspections performed, and we are otherwise asking for the, and incredible amount of support from the parents of the children who go to that facility. At the present time, the parents come from Berkeley, Southfield, Berkeley, and some from Detroit. Parents have expressed an interest in bringing additional minor children to the location, and they've been, they've had to be turned away because of the maximum that they're currently imposed under state law. So I'm asking council to consider voting to add it to an upcoming future agenda, to give us an opportunity to fully present all the information for council's consideration.
Chair, is that something we can do upon the fact that it was a vote before?
Well, a tie vote means that there's a chance.
Right. We can reconsider, we can reconsider a vote.
Yeah, I mean, could you?
I mean, there's new information, there's new information, and I would like to.
I mean, there's new information, I think we're out of here.
Okay, the next person is Cheryl.
Hi, my name is Cheryl. I'm bringing up a problem. There's currently a new code in the city of Southfield, I think it's really ridiculous. You can't have your trash bill showing from the street. So my sister got a letter, a real nasty, third, you know, final notice letter, telling her she needs to cooperate, and she had to move her barrels, she never got any final notices. So now she had to move her barrels behind her house, nowhere else that doesn't show. She can't walk in, severe arthritis, and I don't know what's going to happen, snow flies. She's had her barrels back spot in the corner of her house by her garage for 15 years, and I went through the neighborhood, just one day, right up the stuffy neighborhood, part of the neighborhood, wrote down 35 addresses where the barrels are showing from the street, and saw them, like one right around the corner from me and one of Chiwasi and Indian, when they're right up the street. And I just think that it's kind of ridiculous. I mean, I can understand you don't want trash hanging out, and what hers was, and it was in the barrel, and just me, and maybe it showed up more because she's got a yellow house, I don't know. And even her next-door neighbor is showing from the street. So I think if you're going to have a code, it's for everybody or nobody, and I really think the code's kind of ridiculous because people don't have anywhere to put their barrels. I mean, if you say never showing from the street, she has a long driveway, it was way back at the end of her driveway by our house. So where are you going to put the barrels? You don't have a garage to put them in, you can't fit them in the garage, if you can't show, then it's got to go in the backyard. So that's just what I wanted to say. I think it's really dangerous for her to keep walking around from the back of the house to, she's got high arthritis over there, and I just, what I wanted to just say today. I don't even know why we have that code, and apparently it's new. And that's another thing, when we get a new code, we don't know about it because you don't tell them. Tell the people that live here, and it seems like the code's going to be getting out of hand. And I know you don't want places to look terrible, but I think your code is starting to get a little out of hand. We're not Beverly Hills Calico. Okay, thank you.
The next person is Gerard.
Chair, I want to give in discussion, because I'd like to refer that back to a planner and attorney to look at.
That, the senior ordinance?
Yeah, and to go see what they're running into.
Okay.
It's just some, just, anything.
Hello. Good afternoon. I'm just a registered citizen, so I have no idea what's going on. Currently, I'm dealing with the situation where I was trying to register fence. I'm a licensed contractor, been living a residence for Southfield for going back years I built my home. When I built my home, I had every expectation of erecting a fence, approximately $60 to $70,000 worth of cost when I initially started the concept, and I wasn't able to. However, during that time period, there was no fence ordinance at all whatsoever. Once I finally got the chance, I was under the impression that we were still able to erect a fence and it should be fine. And then we were told there was an ordinance in which the fences were reduced to a specific size and of different variances. The problem that I had is that I'm on a corner house, a corner lot, right off of 10 Mile. The location is very adequate, or excuse me, inadequate for safety and security in my particular situation. I mean, I've been vandalized already, I've lost $20,000 just in damages, and these are, you know, reported by police, I have reports, they're several years in span. As of Tuesday, when I went before the zoning board, I actually had to stop by the police department to fill out my additional police report, which I have the number, the case right here. Officer Cruz took the report at the front desk, I'm waiting to go pick up the additional report. Not saying that, you know, Southfield is a high primary, it's not, I'm not saying that it's the Wild, Wild West, it's not. The fact is, I'm on a corner house, I have a home adjacent whose front entrance is adjacent to 10 Mile, but my garage is spaced in 10 Mile. I have one window above the garage, and at any point in time, it appears to be a point of convenience in which my sister, my brother, they're all police officers. And the number one thing they tell me is that most crimes trade out of convenience, not necessarily. So when someone is rolling down the street, and I'm necessarily a Southfield resident, they can be from anywhere. They see at 8 o'clock, the garage door may be open, 9, 10 o'clock, it may be raining, they'll come back and visit. If that window has not moved, if the blinds haven't moved, they feel comfortable to sit in the yard. At that point, I wake up in the morning to maybe having tools, maybe not having tools, have something missing in the yard, maybe not having damage done to the property in the yard, maybe not. Every day is a, just a barrage of potential issues that I wake up with before I even leave out my door, wondering what I'm going to step into. I've had several cases where, I've had one issue where somebody truck rolled through my circular drive, missed the actual drive, which you shouldn't have drove through in the first place, tore my grass up, and I had to replace that. I'm still dealing with damages when I go through with the lawnmower, bumping and, you know, through the grass and placing the damage that was previously done. I wake up to individuals in my yard, at times I wake up to individuals parked in my driveway waiting to drop their kids off to the bus stop. I wake up to, or I come home at times and the people are in my yard. It's just, I'm on 10 Mile. And the problem is, this ordinance is not reflective of every individual. First of all, Southfield is a diverse location, it's not a cookie cutter city. It wasn't designed to be a subdivision where everything is locked up. We have older homes mixed with newer homes, we have certain issues where they're not reflected to other homes. So my concern is that the ordinance was a way to escape really doing due diligence to find out what each citizen requires, and it pretty much negated those who really needed a fence versus those who wanted a fence. And I feel that the ordinance should be reflective of a litmus test where someone who wants a fence may be getting a petition signed from the neighbors to find out if there's discrepancies, also submit information regarding the quality and style of the fence, as well as perhaps pay an additional fee if they want to go above and beyond the variance. Because I find that the ZVA board is pretty much a joke, and I'm just going to say it right now. When I went to their meeting, paid $200 to the herd, I was disrespected, for one, I was asked in the meetings, all on the paperwork, in the notes, but I was asked, "Why are we even listening to this guy here first?" Because I had to stand up and interrupt him and tell him because I'm a citizen. And what we don't understand is, when I'm moving into my property, I've spent $16,000 a year in taxes for the first five years. This is another issue I've had to have. I've reduced my taxes to $8,000. When you add up 11 years worth of taxes, I've spent over $120,000 just in taxes. Now, we can't always have what we want, but when you pay taxes, I believe that you should really have what you need. I'm sorry.
Really?
Oh, yes ma'am. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, my concern is that the fence ordinance is ridiculous because their options were three options, added cameras in the corners of the house where it's so visible, I did that already, but I have Comcast, so they cut my cable off whenever they wish if I don't pay several months in advance, so that's the issue. The other was, get rid of your dogs, because I have three registered dogs, licensed and everything. The problem is, if they run out of the front of the house, officers roll down the street, they're not on the lead, I get fined, I end up in court the following week. It can happen anytime it has happened. The animal warden has been more than gracious in giving me a leeway, but it's only so many times he can do that. Not in my control, though, some things that you just can't control. But they're registered, everything, that is a conflict of interest. The third thing is, the actual ordinance itself is not reflective of a really supportive ordinance. They, the third option they gave me was to run a row of arborvitus along the lot line where the fence is. And here's my proposal, legally, if I run a row of arborvitus along the fence, they can grow anywhere from five to 10 feet wide, and they'll be locked together, you can't see in or out, that's another hazard. Someone kills you or provides bodies of harm, you'll be in your yard for days before anyone has, you know, finds out because no one will see in or out. The other part is, technically, I can run a row of arborvitus along my fence line, build a fence inside of it, and technically, no one can ever enter to find out if I have a fence. So my question is, what are we really trying to achieve with that? The only thing that they came up with during that meeting was, "We don't want your property to look like a compound." Well, my definition, when I looked at compound, was multiple structures within one facility, barricaded within. It's a single-family home, it's not a compound. So my next question is, are you reviewing your citizens as potential combatants, rebellions, individuals who have an issue with the city? I have no problem with the police, they're always welcome to stop by, no issues. I call them whenever I have an issue, but the problem is that you can't call them until there's a crime committed. I'm tired of having crimes committed, you know, on my property. I'm $20,000 in the hole, I invested $30,000 into the fence. There are two options I can have, reduce my fence down to 30 inches. Now, this is the very area where they say this, I'm sorry, I just want to pass, I know I don't have limited time, but there's several topics, but when I called the department, they told me that that was my option right then and there, to have just that red box, anywhere outside of that line, outside of the red box, I could have a fence. Inside the red box is a variance. Went down to the department, they said, "No, that's not the case." But they referred me to Ms. Malali, who wrote me that email to give me some understanding because the building department didn't have an idea. By the time we got to that point, we already had the fence up. The inspector came out, said, "You have an option, tear the fence out," or, and this is the other part, this is the worst part, he says, "Tear the fence out, or we'll issue a citation and you'll end up in court." Now, should the judge find you guilty and you, and remind, tells you to remove the fence, you can end up with a bench warrant. Should you roll down the street and you get pulled over by the police, you will end up in jail for a fence. I'm sitting there, like, I'm $30,000 in the hole, I'm trying to secure my property, and I have an inspector telling me, "Keep your fence up, secure yourself, or go to jail." I'm like, hold on, time out, are we trying to put our people in prison now? I don't get this anymore. My biggest concern is that, right now as it stands, within that red box that you see that they say you absolutely can't put a fence in, I can raise a fence 30 inches tall with 16-foot sections and a space, if it doesn't pay how far the space can be, it can be this close or this far apart, but that would be considered a decorative fence. I can run it around my whole entire lot, and it'll be sufficient. I raise it up to 72 inches and connect it, now all of a sudden it's a compound and I'm in trouble. My biggest concern with this is the fact that it's not reflective of every home. They say it's the candy bar test, one person should have it, everyone should have it. Not everyone wants a fence. I need it, you know, and I've spent over $100,000 in taxes, and at this point, I just can't, you know, move forward. And my understanding, when I talked to Mrs. Malali, she said, "The only reason why they made a fence ordinance in the very beginning was because someone went out of hand and made a stockade fence to the sky." People were driving, it was just ridiculous, and for that one person in particular messed it up for anyone else. But we're a community, we're diverse, one person just causes the need for us to address these things appropriately, but not eliminate it for everybody. Thank you, please, Tom, sorry I ran over, but.
Thank you. Chair, if you have something to answer, because I've always wondered why you have a, I live right, you know, not far.
Oh, I have no idea.
I mean, I've instructed the rest of the town.
Yeah, I've been, and I put a stop order on it, and it's in conflict right now. I literally sat there with Mr. Gardello and discussed with him, he had to call the city to find out, he said, "Well, why don't you, you know, do this?" I said, "Well, because, you know, the height of it, I can cut it down to 30, and it will be an ordinance, and I mean, it will be in compliance with ordinance, that's why I installed the post." Well, he says, "Well, you know, why didn't you do it like the gate next door?" I said, "Well, the gate next door is not an ordinance." So he called down to the city to verify, and said, "It's 20, oh yeah, that's not an ordinance." So then he said, "Well, why don't you write a list of all the houses?" I said, "Okay, I'll write a list." Then they come back and says, "Well, with this list, you know, we're going to get everybody who doesn't have an, every, most people say it's three, you know, they've had it for three years. Those who haven't, guess what, they go to court, guess not to show up." Me, because I'm the one who pointed them out, so now I got issues with all my neighbors. I have an neighbor on the corner road on my living, I mean, no longer speaks to him, I have a neighbor next door to me who's actually wanting to fight all the time because of the situation, because it's pitting us against each other. And this was done, and the funny part about it is, I'm watching people put up fences, and everybody's claiming that they were done before 2012. But I'm just watching in 2014, but because the city doesn't have an idea when or when they weren't done, I'm the one who gets hit, you know, as the example. And at this point, I don't know what to do. I mean, literally, I am one step from being hurt or hurting someone on my property for not being in security, let alone with the animal. when or when they weren't done, I'm the one who gets hit, you know, as the example. And at this point, I don't know what to do. I mean, literally, I am one step from being hurt or hurting someone on my property for not being in security, let alone with the animals, you know.
Let's see if we can, we'll talk to our city plan, and we'll be in touch. All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Do you want me to, okay. Again, the residential fences are permitted through the building department, but I am, I'm somewhat familiar with this site, and I actually drive by there to and from work every day. Um, so, I've never met you, and I, I know the ordinance allows for fences to be built no further than the front yard of the front of the home. And in, in the city of Southfield, even though this is a double frontage lot, so ravine would be where the home address is, and Ten Mile would be, um, on the side road, we only have one front yard, and that's the permanent address of the property. And, and the council did not want fences to extend no further in the front yard than the front of the building. So this gentleman can build the fence along Ten Mile in this side yard, in both side yards and the rear yard. My understanding, he came in and got a permit for, for this type of fence, but the fence that was actually installed, um, did not comply with the permit that was requested, that was requested and granted, and therefore, a stop work order was imposed. He did have an option to go to the ZBA, to, to seek a waiver to have the fence installed in the front yard, and I understand you were denied. So, you know, part of this is, you can see about two thirds of his yard can be put in fence, and he can run a fence along Ten Mile, because Ten Mile is considered a, a side yard in this case, but it can't extend any further than the front of the home on the property's address. And again, the fence posts were extended all the way to ravine and across the front yard, which was not consistent with the permit that was granted, and thus caused the stop work order to be issued. And I, I believe that those to be the facts as I know them. And this illustration does accommodate situations where you have a double frontage lot. Um, but again, as, as we, when we reviewed and adopted the fence ordinance, um, the council did not want to have front yards fenced in and encroaching on the neighbors' visibility, and therefore, this is why this, this ordinance was established this way, and it does accommodate these types of situations.
We're gonna have, uh.
No, I, when you say, I, I mean, I, I don't think that's right, to say you can't have a fence in the front yard, if you, if you have a fence, a fence that no one can see, or like a slade, you know, um, kind of wire fence, or?
Well, this gentleman mentioned, we do allow living fences or decorative fences of a certain size and make, so that you can delineate your, your frontage without, without barricading it in.
I'm not talking about that. You might, you can carry.
Yes.
They actually told him in the, at the ZBA, get rid of his dog, tell him, get rid of your dog.
I'm not aware of what the discussion was and what the conditions were.
I know, but I mean, why can't you, why can't you have a wire fence?
Just to allow.
Just front of you, yeah, what did you change it?
Well, there was, there was.
I can understand, excuse me, I can understand a flat fence where you have no visibility, but a wire fence that you can see through, especially, you know.
Again, if you, if you recall, uh, I believe it was on Ten Mile, someone built a six-foot stockade fence right up to the sidewalk, all the way across, across the front yard. There was other, um, areas where someone put a six-foot fence along their side yard all the way up to the front, and the neighbors complained that their views were cut off. And as you recall, I went out, I probably took fifty to a hundred photos of different fencing. We had no fence regulations at all, and we, we shared that with the council, and this was the starting point, where we, you know, we came up with standards for the type of fence, the height of fence, the location of fence, where it would be allowed and where it wouldn't be allowed. Uh, the planning department handles non-residential fencing, the building department handles residential fencing, but it's all part of the ordinance. And we did, we did come up with photos and examples of different situations. Now, that's not to say that it can't be re-looked at or revisited, but in this particular case, again, a permit was issued, and what was installed, um, was not consistent with the permit that was issued, and that's, that's why we had a problem.
But I'm gonna let you talk of this project, because you did.
Okay, I'm sorry, but yeah, the fact that he just entered was not true, because he's pointing out a picture, he says it along Ten Mile, which, I can't run it along Ten Mile.
Yes, you, you can run it to the front of your building, and I'll be happy to talk to you after.
Okay.
I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you.
Okay.
You can call me tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
By the way, I did not, uh, call anybody on your fence, all right? You said it's somebody that, my fault, that didn't get it for me.
They didn't get it from you?
Yeah, he said I was objecting to your fence. I don't know you, and I don't know the location.
Oh, no, I was, I was told.
But I did go see it afterwards.
No, not my fence, I was told that the reason why the fence ordinance began is because someone, he wrecked his fence out, was totally.
No, my neighbor's, I don't want that.
Oh, I, yeah, I.
Please, you got my shoe no size.
No, that's what I was told by the inspector.
Yeah, all right.
So, I'm, okay.
I'm sorry.
Mary Lycett, I'm in that two, five, six, thirty-three ravine in Southfield, um, Mr. Hitman's neighbor. Uh, I'm a neighbor of Mr. Hitman, and I support, along with all of my other neighbors. I had a petition, I went to each and every neighbor, I spoke to them, and they all was in support of his fence. They want it completed, as is. They have no problem with the fence, we can see through the fence, and he put a lot of time and energy, effort, and, and thinking about what type of fence to put up there, and I think he did a great job. In fact, like you said, Southfield is not a cookie cutter place. I went out to apply to have a fence too, and when they drew it out, my house is sitting at a forty-five degree, and the red line that they put the fence in my house, it went right up on my front porch, where I can allow to have a fence across in front of my house. Now, his house is different, my neighbor's house is different. Everybody on that block, their houses are sitting differently. So the fence, the, the ordinance does not work for every individual house. So I think he should be able to have his fence. No, I'm not getting a fence, my neighbors don't want a fence, but it's just the fact that this ordinance does not fit every house in Southfield. My house is kind of like up on a hill, and then if, if you want to take a look at this, if you see where that line right there, it goes right up on my front porch where I'm allowed to have a fence. And his yard, he, all of his yard is right up front. I have two acres. I have front and back, but yet, my fence is right on my front porch. So I think you need to revisit the ordinance and do it on individual basis. I do agree, some houses should not have a fence, like Londonwood residence. You go down that street, every house is right close together, you want a fence on those streets, in front of those houses, it wouldn't look right. Our street is kind of like, sit back off the road, kind of like in a farm area. I think you should revisit, and allow him to have a fence. Thank you, all right.
Do you want me to go left? I have, I have a few, um, questions, or, um, I'll start with the easiest one, and I'll, and I'll make my way down. Um, next week at our council meeting, there is a public hearing for the Akiva school. Um, there, next week, at our, there's a public hearing for the Akiva school to, uh, add on to their building and do a whole bunch of different things. I just want to let everyone know that I have a conflict with my children at that school, um, so I just wanted to put that out there.
That's the one we talk tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, another question with, with the Evergreen Road project, they're putting the lights off and they're getting ready to put the finishing touches. If you look to the west side of Evergreen, the opposite city hall, um, the electrical wires, the lights, it's just, it does not look nice.
What's on side in?
On the other, other side of the street, and I don't know if there's any plans to do some reconfiguration with some of those electrical poles or some of the wiring, but we have new street, we have new, new sidewalks, new lighting, even some pedestrian lighting, and then you look on the west side of the street, and it's just, it, uh, takes away from the new construction.
Even though it's got tree curbs, cut them down, it's got roads down.
Even, even some of the poles, when you look at them, are, are leaning.
Oh, yeah.
And so I don't know, I mean, you know, while we have traffic, uh, you know, council will lay in, I mean, they, they'd, uh, look into that.
Can you check in for that, John?
I can answer that question if you want to. I'm at the DTE and, uh, Gary Tressel, Advanced Disruption, um, five zero one o'clock. And, uh, my three minutes time, Charlie. Anyways, Anthony from DTE said that he's gonna take it up with the bosses, that Gary's supposed to follow through, they all agreed that they were terrible. Uh, the one solution that cost a bundle is very small, it's like about nine million. And the other is something that they're gonna try to work through, so I don't know what the results are, uh, but it does look bad. Everybody at the meeting agreed, and, uh, DTE is gonna take it under advisement, and there's one o'clock Friday.
Okay. Um.
The lights are coming down.
Yeah, the lights are coming down.
Okay.
The poles.
The vent poles.
The vent poles, and, and just a lot of wires.
Yeah, on the poles.
Um, I believe this week, Captain Colombo retired from the fire department. I didn't know if there was any presentation that was going to be done at the next meeting for him or anything like that. I know we did it for the, um, principals retired from public schools, I just didn't know if it was something special, something standard, or if it was, I don't know what the city's custom is when people retire in that fashion, or if they're, if they're public servants or anything. Okay.
Different ones, yeah, different ones.
We used to have a luncheon, they thanked you and honored them and stuff, but they eliminated that several years ago, so.
They just had gone up to something, they had something on the side, and she would have, unfortunately, I don't know about it, we all know, we all know.
It was a little bit of a break.
This was quick.
What's this?
This, we decided kind of quickly, I mean.
Yeah, but it seemed, the, you know, that we got, I got very late, you know.
Um, I know that, that Mr. Zorn's aware of this, this item, but I wanted to bring it up to the entire council. At one of the fire stations, um, I believe it's Fire Station Three, they, on the Twelve Mile and Evergreen, they have, uh, one bathroom for the entire building, and they said some, you know, they, they don't schedule any, uh, females work, those in that building at all. But they said, even with all men, sometimes it gets a little tricky, um, with one bathroom, I mean, it's a, it's a bathroom with a shower, it's, it's everything combined, so it can get, uh, sticky situation. I didn't know if there's anything in, uh, budget for capital improvement.
It's like a norm.
It's worse than a norm. Um, because even if you get visitors, you know, it can get, uh.
Maybe there's a.
So I thought, I didn't know if there's any room, so maybe there's a per capita improvement.
Poor you, John, look back. No, that was, that's, that's one of the older ones.
I just have two more.
Yeah, that was a little older.
Thank you. Um, there was, uh, I spoke to Fred and Sue about this, there's been, um, some of the campaign literature, websites, things that they have this year, pictures that are copyrighted or owned by the city.
Wow.
And, um, I didn't know if there was a specific rule against that, and the suggestion would make that, um, I don't know if it's either clerk's office or if it's the attorney's office to, um, start, uh, the next campaign cycle and the packet that, uh, candidates get to include language about using city-owned graphics, pictures, logos, things like that. Um, and the other part is, would it make sense that now that we've gone through the primaries, to send a letter now to the remaining candidate, um, for websites, anything like that, with pictures? And, and I, and I only.
Which we've done, actually, yeah. But I think what's happening right, people are pulling them down off the website.
Yeah, and, and I know that, I was almost guilty of it when I was campaigning two years ago, and then someone looking at my material said, if you're using pictures that have anything with the city's logo or thing like that, to make sure that they're not, um, city-owned or copyrighted. And I ended up having to scrap one of my pieces, because it turns out I called the city, and I'm not sure they were city-owned. So, um, and the last, the last issue, um, I got a call on Friday from the chairman of the art page. Um, he called me, he was a little frustrated, I know that he's been trying to find some time to meet with us. Um, he said, they started out with nine members, they're down to eight, because someone resigned for lack of movement.
No, illness, I am, I was under a marriage appointment.
Oh.
He said he was unable to, I couldn't quit for any reason, but, you know, he's got a mouth, right? He'd come to there and say whatever he wants to say.
Absolutely.
You know, they make you ill, and he's ill.
Um, but he said that, as a chairman, he's ready to resign as well as several other people on the commission. I would hate for that to happen, they, he plans all the ideas they have to start installing art around the city, you, without using some money with fundraisers and things like that.
The meeting is, um, they're scheduling a meeting.
Okay.
It was in the press.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, let's, uh, that was all my.
Communicating.
It was a, I was a caller received on, on Friday, so.
Somebody called my office.
He lived right on the corner from me, so I, you know, one of those.
I'm gonna move by you then, too, so.
Absolutely.
Madam Attorney, we have a legal issue that we've got to take care of, and that is conflict of interest. We either have to declare that it's not a conflict of interest, or he has to, he has to abstain.
Abstain. Yeah, I mean, it's not a financial, do you, do you, I mean, I don't see there's a financial interest. Your children go to school there, theoretically, you pay tuition.
I do. I mean, my, my, my thought was to either get a vote of confidence that I'm not, uh, playing any favorites, or to abstain. So.
But that's fine, I didn't want to just, because I'm accusing.
Not really abstain, just recusing.
Right. Prove that, just from that.
Just from that one issue, yeah, sorry. Personally, I think that he's, I have confidence that he'd, he'd be fair enough, that, uh, even though, I mean, his kids got those rules sometimes.
Right.
So I, I wouldn't have any problem with you, uh, taking part in the, in the vote.
One of the other ways to look at it is, whether you have a direct, you look at also the appearance of it, would somebody say that you supported it only because your children? So sometimes on an appearance basis, you, you do take yourself out of it, even though realistically, there, there was no direct conflict, but it, it, it just negates the appearance even, so.
Will know, if this poor knows of one, yes.
There was, there was a little years ago, that, like, there was no stop, no stopping the thing.
Yeah, the charter was amended.
Well, unless you, unless you own enough money to make a difference.
The charter was amended to talk about exactly what, it was a financial.
Unless it has an effect on.
Right, a financial, it was a financial, right.
Usually it has a percentage, usually, like five percent or more.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the fact that you, I mean, ostensibly, everyone probably, when a gas station comes through, we buy gas there, or a store, we buy, I mean, just because you spend money there, I don't think it's a financial interest that you are getting a benefit financially from that. Um, but I think it's more of an appearance, if somebody might argue, looks like your kids go to school, you have a direct relationship with the school, no, you may or may not.
That's not a very good of interest.
Oh, wow.
But, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's, I mean, I have no problem.
I don't think it's a, I do not think it's a conflict of interest under the charter. It's, it's more, do you feel that there would be an appearance that you would like to, right? It's, it's more, do you feel that there would be an appearance that you would like to, right?
According to rubber rules, if someone brings the subject to the table, that they think it may be a conflict of interest, then the body has to act on it. Either say, it's not a conflict of interest, you can take part in the discussion and go, or it is.
That's, that's true, that's true. I mean, if, if the council, I, I don't know if we've done that before, but it's, that's a-
I think it's a person's idea.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I do, I think it, I don't think there's a direct financial conflict.
I'll go for you.
All right.
All right. Do your free speech.